All right, let's go ahead and start at 7 o'clock. Thank you, thank you. So, um, let's go ahead and start. I'd like to call the meeting in order. Uh, let's have a rule call.
Mayor Bagley.
Here.
Councilmembers Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Martin.
Here.
Peck.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Mary Abecorm.
Thank you, let's hit a pledge.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, is there any, uh, a couple of council members? We'll start with Councilmember Peck. You wanted a few minutes to discuss, um, agenda items, future agendas, et cetera?
Yes, thank you. Um, actually, this is going to be a question for council, um, to see if they're interested in doing this. As I ran, uh, read through the land development codes and, and, um, paired it with Envision Longmont and the sustainability plan, I realized that some of the Envision Longmont plan and the codes may not reflect what developers want. And I met, Marcia and I had the opportunity to meet with a couple of developers who made absolute sense about what they would like to see in the code updates. So I'm going to ask council if you would be interested in, um, having, we talked about our Friday morning meetings of council getting together. Would it be possible, or would you be interested in having a, um, meeting, perhaps not on a Friday morning, whenever, and invite land developers to have them tell us what it is in our codes that prevents them from building affordable houses? Um, actually have conversations with them. I've never done this before, except for one-on-one with a couple of developers. But this is really, really important that we get this code right, that it matches Envision Longmont, that we bring in sustainability, and how can they help us meet our goals and vice versa. So, are you interested in doing that? And if so, we can direct staff to set up a meeting.
Mayor Protem, Mayor Protem Christensen.
I think that's a wonderful idea because...
I think that's a wonderful idea. We've, I know Councilman Finley has also expressed interest in this, and I have too. And it's something that we need to think carefully about how we can be creative, a little more creative and a little bit more flexible to give developers some leeway and so that we can take, uh, we can understand from their expertise what, um, what would help, what would help them to build more affordable housing, or to have, uh, speed up something about timelines, things like that, that would make it, um, more cost-effective for them and more appealing, but also just to have our future, um, uh, code be a little more reflective of reality and the fact that we don't have enough affordable housing.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Uh, yeah, I concur. I was at this meeting and, uh, I think that our, uh, land developers imparted some knowledge to us that is only learned for the first time by experience. It did make absolute sense and, um, I thought they were telling us things that, you know, I, I last week was expressing the need to, to front-load the development of new units somehow, uh, and sure enough, this, the, we were, we were told, yeah, this could be done. You know, we could get, we could get some units out there really fast. Um, so I think it's a wonderful idea and we should probably solicit several of these meetings with different developers and get different viewpoints.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Um, I will say that any sort of step towards bringing in open dialogue and conversation with developers and, and city is, is a good idea. I also believe it probably pertinent for us to also solicit developers who may not have traditionally worked here in Longmont, but have experience in dealing with some of the issues. I was just at the Saving Places Conference in Denver, uh, this last week, and I will tell you, there's some developers that are doing some adaptive re-usage of industrial areas of towns and things like that. They're doing great work and who also believe in a more proactive approach to the housing issue as well. So I'd like us to, again, like I said, possibly solicit developers who are not our kind of a normal cast of characters here in Longmont. Thank you.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I think this is an excellent idea and I applaud you for bringing it forward.
Uh, when is our first Friday meeting? We haven't scheduled it yet?
No. And we, and actually, the discussion was, some of the council members didn't even feel that Friday would be the correct day, so, um, that was just to, to open up the discussion of saying it would be on a Friday.
Well, I think...
So, what direction do we want to give, uh, staff?
Well, we've got, we've got, uh, everyone except me, and I'm, I'm for it, uh, which would mean that, why don't we just, do you mind just calling and setting it up? Could you take responsibility for that, Councilmember Peck? Do you want to just reach out to who you talk to and...
Um, I think...
Or do you want staff to do it?
I would rather staff do it. They probably know more of the developers than I do. I mean, I, I don't...
We'll, we'll touch base to see who is in attendance at the meeting that was mentioned, and then we will work on getting other names and getting names regarding those others who do the adaptive reuse.
Okay.
And pull that together, so...
Great, thank you. Anything else, Councilmember Peck?
I, I guess you'll just let us know when that meeting will take place.
No, actually, we, we, we're going to give you a call to find out the names and then we'll...
Great, okay.
Get that information. We'll have to talk to everyone.
Thank you.
And then Eugene, the, I think it is on the other item, it is a Friday meeting, is the way you're, it's the 23rd, when it looks like that will occur based on the way it was drafted.
23rd is our first?
Yes. It's the first Friday. Eugene, you want to talk?
While we're at it, uh, we talked about, we're not meeting here. Uh, I mean, we could, but we're not. We, the whole point was to have a more free-flowing dialogue, and, uh, I assume there'd be some type of food present.
I'll bring donuts.
Donuts, snacks, whatever. And so, uh, where, where are we having that first meeting on the 23rd?
I, I don't know. Um, the museum, the library, here in the conference room, uh, the executive session room, um, I, I really don't know. I guess that's...
Can we have staff just give us some ideas?
Staff do that, yeah.
And emphasis on food?
I think we thought about the study session room because of, we have the study session room reserved, and because in the posting, that location also has to be included in the posting, so...
So 8:30 on Friday the 23rd in the study room? Stud, right? Okay. And, all right, with donuts.
Eugene.
There's consensus on donuts.
Eugene will make donuts.
Not gluten-free donuts. That defeats the purpose of a donut. All right, is there anyone else who, is there, I don't see anything else that needs to be added to future agendas or, uh, or, uh, questions regarding future issues? Let's go ahead and move on to, uh, first call, public invited to be heard. Um, just a quick reminder, if you're not on the list, and, and we end, first call, public invited to be heard, I'm not going to call on anybody, you gotta wait till the end of the meeting, so make sure your list, your, your name gets on the list, please. All right, so let's go ahead and start with John Ko. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, am I on the air? Yeah, I just wanted to thank you all for...
I don't think your mic's on.
Oh.
There it is, now it's on.
It's on. Okay. Actually, we have our AV person here, so I'm not going to touch any mouse because I've actually done that and confused the previous, uh, Mayor Bryant. So I'm John Ko, uh, West Third Avenue, and, uh, I'd like, I'd actually like to show you some technology, and I'm hoping that Sandy can show it on the screen here as much as possible, and I'm not going to drive at all because, uh, are we able to show the water demo? Or, um, see, we're completely live here. Actually, the demo I want to get to then is a SegNet. Yeah, I, see, I don't, I don't actually want to...
Is it on the web?
Oh, oh, I don't actually use Internet Explorer. Do you have Firefox? Okay, well, we'll, we'll try it with, uh, yeah, we'll try it with Explorer. I don't actually use, I don't actually use Internet Explorer at all, sorry.
It's all right, Firefox is on.
Oh, that's fine.
Just fix it.
Oh, actually, I, I do not, in fact, we, if, a lot of times, things send you back to Internet Explorer, and I just stopped using it because that's almost like a bug to me, but that's okay for right now. Because I don't want to point any biases, what I want to point to is some technology about image processing, so I'm using up my time, but, uh, the, actually, I'm just going to give the, the web address, which is segnet.org, and they're changing it a little bit, but it's basically a web server. And what the web server does is it gives you image processing, and it's almost shocking.
You can type in what they're doing.
Oh, yeah, segnet.org, I believe, and I didn't bring my glasses. Sig, net, dot, okay, somebody back me up here. Oh, yeah, see, they, they have changed this a little bit, but, um, let's go back on to the water. Okay, so, uh, sorry about that, because I really wasn't, wasn't ready for, okay, so I'm going to go to web, yeah, and water. Yes, yeah, I see the web a lot different than some people. Oh, there's SegNet, actually, so...
There we go.
Deep learning, could you just, um, yeah, including architecture, yeah. So basically, oh, this is just a, they're basically live demos, I'll come back in the future and do this because I'm not going to use up my time, but basically, what it comes down to is the internet, internet is being trained by us and we're training the internet, and in some ways that's good and in some ways that's bad. And the city is using this authentication when they, when you come to the internet. I'll get right to the point here, because I don't, sorry, I've lost my little thing here, but, and it's all okay, because I really don't want to push any of this technology, because I'm not pushing technology, I'm showing you something that is, okay, there you go. Here's the fun part, is this the mouse? Uh, I thought you, you know, Sandy doesn't have time to sit around and play with these things like people in data centers, but this thing is all local data. Okay, so, this alone would shock you because, now, don't let Brian hit the space bar, because you can let, literally come in here and start changing this stuff, and this is all just in the graphics processor locally. So when we talk about bandwidth and stuff, bandwidth is more toward images, which are hard to process, although they're not, in fact, it, when I'll show you in the future, I'll show this image processing, that you can basically check, tell the difference between a pole and a tree. And that's what shocked me, because I want to actually make rearview facing, uh, instead of putting your cellphone in your pocket, put it on the back of your helmet, wear your helmet, and be able to see a pole or actually a car coming toward you, because with actually this false color imaging, I'm pushing toward actually making, and so your cellphone is sitting there watching your back. So that wasn't quite what I prepared, but, yeah, thank you, and, uh, I want to actually make a, uh, I, I think we should actually turn into a county instead of a city here by expanding to the boundaries of the school district. So that's my challenge for 2020, in really making things make sense for this city, um, because I see a lot of crossover. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ko. Bob Jeffrey?
First of all, Mayor Bagley, and I'd like to apologize for la, a couple of weeks ago I was here, I used the B-word. Uh, place west of here, so anyway.
Damn it, don't do it again.
I, um, I'm a lover of Airbnb, and we have used it as, uh, going to it, using it, and we have a lovely place here in, in Longmont. One of the things that I think is a misconception about the Airbnb is when it comes into your neighborhood, there're going to be cars, parties, and all these things. Not true. We do the most incredible taking care of our property and our neighborhood. We are contributors, and I know that's what you want here, is that kind of thing. A, a lot of the people seem to think that they're going to be, um, corporations or somebody can, buying up properties. Uh, that might be true in some places in California and, but not in a, not in a city like this. The people that come here, first of all, they come here because mostly it's associated with family. They come here for a wedding, they come here for a graduation, they come here for, uh, just to hang in, in this beautiful, beautiful place. But, you know, it's not a destination like other places are, so it doesn't have the attraction to people who would want to invest money to buy up things here. There's not enough money in it for them, thank God. So, the people that are going to be running your Airbnbs here, they're going to be your people, not those people. And, um, I think if they ever were to step out of line, your people are probably going to put, set them straight. I appreciate this, I only want to make those two points, that, number one, we are contributors to the community, that, you have the most compassionate look on your face. Is she? You guys as a whole, um, I can just sense the energy and compassion in this group. I can't wait to spend more time with you, but I think we've got a great thing going here and a, a, an opportunity for this community to grow from what's being, going on in Airbnb. And I thank you for time.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffrey. Richard Showers?
Mayor, council, my name is Richard Showers. I reside at 601 Collier Street, Longmont, in the historic East Side neighborhood, also called Hana. Hana is one of the oldest neighborhoods in Longmont, and my wife Tracy and I are blessed to live here and be surrounded by so many caring and involved neighbors. We have many active subcommittees in Hana around areas of importance to us, and they include grant writing, newsletters, block captains, neighborhood watch, social committees, garage sale, Collier Park issues, train quiet zones, development codes, transition zones, and historic preservation, all under the coordination of our neighborhood leaders, Dido Clark and Sharon O'Leary. I received a message today that the land development code draft was on the agenda tonight, and this would be a good time to have input. When I read the development code, one word jumped out at me. That word was enhance. While the word enhance sounds great in the city's mission statement, to enhance the quality of life for those who live in, work in, or visit our community, in the development code, in particular, the residential design standards, 15.05.110, under purpose, it says, "to protect and enhance the character and quality of neighborhoods." Used here, the word enhance is ambiguous and subject to interpretation. I think instead of saying enhance, we say, "a collaborative alliance between city and neighborhoods." This change sends a message that council wants to work with and empower neighborhoods, a platform you all ran on when seeking election.
Thank you, sir. Marianne Riggi?
Riggi.
Riggi, sorry.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Marianne Riggi, and, um, I'm a resident of 70, 21st Avenue in Longmont, Colorado. Um, it's a senior residence, and it's very nice. Um, I'd like to split up one minute for each little subject that I wanted to cover, all related, and the first subject is part of my story from when, I told it before, I don't know if I told a city council meeting, but I told it at a fundraiser one time for Agape. Um, part of my story of being homeless four years ago, what, oh, no, five years ago, in 2013, before the floods, that might be almost six years ago, um, is that Tammy and I, my friend, who were over in Boulder, came on the boat, and, um, we needed to know where to go. It was during a snowstorm, and we didn't know where to go or what to do when we got here, and what happened was, um, we needed to find food and shelter. So, um, we, um, asked the police, they weren't able to help us. I realize that, because they told us they had a dog in the backseat, and they couldn't take anyone in the squad car, and I didn't realize how hard it would be to go in the back of a squad car anyway, so. So anyway, what happened was, and it's okay, that's okay, because then, um, we were looking for help, and a call-and-ride driver pulled over and offered us a free ride, because it was a snowstorm, and got us to the Justice Center, and we got food from the Hope van at the time, in front of the Justice Center, and the Hope van took us to Journey, which is part of Agape, it still is, I believe, and we had shelter that night. It was very comfortable, and they had a women's section for us, and, and nice little beds and, and blankets, and we were warm and comfortable. So I wanted to share that first, because, um, I understand that there's some, been some changes in the homeless programs, and that's fine, there are always changes. The thing that I'm concerned about most is my second subject, which I don't know how much more I'm going to get to say, but that is, um, the need for any human being to eat at night, in the evening, the evening meal. And my concern, I'm not being critical of any agency or, or the Longmont Housing Authority or, uh, the city council or anyone, I'm just saying that it's a given, as I see it, that homeless people get a third meal in the evening. So, um, because there've been changes, there's, um, more of a challenge for a homeless person to get a meal, the third meal, and I won't go into detail about that. But my third point is that I can't do anything to make all those changes myself, and all I can do is focus what I can do now. As a senior resident of a senior apartment building, what I do is volunteer work for, um, Agape, and it's called the, um, I can't think of what it's called, no, it's called the, um, Safe Haven, down at our church where I belong. It's actually New Creation Church, which is a wonderful group of people, and Sunday nights, my friend and I, who has worked for Agape and is a member of the church, go down there and help the homeless.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Daria Laverne. As you say, your voice got very deep, Daria.
My name is Daria Laverne. I reside at 429 Emery Street. Mayor, council, in a moment, I'm going to ask Harold to play a short 60-second audio tape clip of an interview on KGNU radio last November 30th with Larry Ambrose. Mr. Ambrose has been an advocate for people being affected by gentrification in Denver. He holds degrees in law and business administration. His father helped save the historic district in Pueblo, Colorado, many decades ago, when developers wanted to scrape and replace it with an industrial park. Today, downtown Pueblo is a focal point for tourism. Can you play that?
In 2010, we'd passed a new zoning code in Denver. We had rezoned the entire city. Of course, the city maintained that this was a very inclusive process. Ninety-nine percent of the people in Denver knew nothing about what was happening to their own property. There were parts of Denver that were massively rezoned. You know, our, our master plan, it's called Blueprint Denver, calls for areas of stability and areas of change. There were areas of stability that have changed so much that the word "stability" becomes meaningless, and areas of change become almost infinite. There's never been a study that was done prior to a rezoning to say, "Okay, we're bringing in this density, we're bringing in all these people, what are the ramifications? How much new open space do we need? How many people are going to be displaced? You know, what is the gentrification? How many people today have already had to leave the city? We don't know that number."
Do we here in Longmont know that number? Only if we've done the necessary research will we know. Before this council signs off on any code changes or updates, it is imperative that every neighborhood in Longmont, some 40 or so more, be given the opportunity to know how these changes will affect their known neighborhoods. I'm not here just to speak on behalf of my own beloved historic East Side, but for all residents in every neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Laverne. Paula Fitzgerald, welcome back, Paula.
Okay, it's on. My name's Paula Fitzgerald. I reside at 419 Emery Street and have led the Historic East Side Neighborhoods review of the important zoning and land development code documents, and will summarize some of our top concerns. You have a letter of our full concerns and review, but tonight I'd like to focus on just a few of those. In the parking section of the draft code, there's a chart that shows the maximum number of parking spaces to be provided and required. Maximum parking spaces would essentially allow zero parking spaces to be included if chosen by the developer. Parking has significant impact in our neighborhood. We suggest adding minimums to the parking chart, so there's a reasonable range of parking required. Parking's a growing issue and something that should not be ignored. A parking survey of available spaces within the block of a proposed development should be required of the application, even when a shared parking use agreement is in place. In the mixed use and non-residential design standards section, we ask that equipment and rooftop... and rooftop towers, such as elevator towers, be placed on the interior of the building, such as in the basement, as it's too massive and tall for the roof and should not be exempted from consideration as part of the overall building height, as is the case with the current code. If these towers are necessary on the roof, they should be considered part of the overall building height and should not be allowed to exceed that maximum building height. In the New Residential Compatibility Section, we very much appreciate the work being done in this section, especially towards protection of privacy of adjacent neighbors, but we do have a few concerns. One of the greatest of those concerns is the application of residential compatibility standards limited to an area within 75 feet of the adjacent rear residential lot line. This distance is far too short to make a meaningful transition area and provide necessary residential homeowner protection. Where a rear parking lot is provided for the commercial building, as is encouraged in other areas in the document, the reduced height would typically not even reach the building, but would fall somewhere within the parking lot itself. We strongly feel that the reduced height should apply to the entire depth of the adjacent lot, or a minimum of 200 feet, whichever is greater. We also believe a two-story maximum height is what should be applied to developments in this transition zone adjacent to residential homes. In closing, there are several neighbors and concerned residents who are here tonight to listen to this discussion and show support for these comments. I would like to ask these people to stand, so that you can understand the level of concern and of those who were able to make it tonight. Thank you. And thank you for your work on this document and your attention to our concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzgerald.
Mayor Bagley, members of council. My name is Rick Fitzgerald. I've lived at 419 Emory Street for the past 37 years. I'm the old man on the block. I've raised my family here and have no plans to leave. Ours is a classic, traditional neighborhood that neo-traditional planners look to for their inspiration. They pull architectural details from our homes, mimic our front porches, and replicate the diverse styles. But one thing that is often not able to be replicated is the true diversity of a neighborhood like ours. We have nearly every economic class and ethnicity represented in our wonderful, stable, historic East Side neighborhood. We want to protect this. Our primary concern is on maintaining the stability and historic character of Longmont's oldest neighborhood, the historic East Side. We also wish to remain a safe and walkable neighborhood. We do not find any provision in the Residential Compatibility Section of the draft code to protect solar shading from new tall buildings. Solar access requirements should be included to support sustainability. Shade onto homeowner-installed solar panels or onto vegetable gardens would diminish goals for sustainability. Protection of solar access should be added to the document. I also question if later remodels are to be held to the same standards. There is often questions of accountability for remodeling done after initial builds. All remodels in these areas should become part of the same development review procedure and held to the same codes. Historic design guidelines should be made to interact with this code. There should be strong historic preservation codes, and there should be continued neighborhood review of plans within 750 feet of a proposed development. An update to the current Development Code document is overdue. To maintain the vitality of our community, these documents must remain relevant. We applaud your work, that of planning and zoning, and the hard work of your planning staff. Thank you for taking this on and for listening to my concerns.
Thank you very much. Dido Clark. Is it Dido or Dido? Dido?
Hi. Yeah, it's Dido.
Dido.
Thank you. Yeah, I live at 534 Baker Street, and I'm the co-chair of the Historic East Side. And today, I wanted to share a few concerns that some neighbors have asked me to voice today, and it's about the short-term rentals. So, and a very crucial fact about the Historic East Side is that it's not an HOA, so we don't have lots of rules and regs. So, we feel like we're more vulnerable, so we've got to get the land use and the codes right for us, hopefully. So, I wanted to share a quote from Keep Neighborhoods First organization, and it says, "The influx of out-of-town visitors can upset the peaceful enjoyment of longstanding residential neighborhoods. Short-term renters have no stake in the community, and therefore no reason to care how the neighborhood around them suffers from their vacation activities." So that's a concern that some people have, and more specifically, there are questions about having up to 12 people in a five-bedroom rental. Now, that could lead to some additional parking requirements, and I'm not sure if this is tackled in the code right now. Parking, as you know, is already a problem on the Historic East Side, and we're expecting that because we are one of the bookends for our beautiful historic downtown, that people will want to have somewhere to stay right on the doorstep. So, you know, I think we are expecting that this could be a real phenomenon in our neighborhood. Another question that people had was, "Could you really rent out your place for every day of the year?" And another concern was that only 330 people were involved in the survey, and out of nearly, well, 92,000 people in town, it's, we didn't think that this was enough. And so, thank you for listening, and I want to thank all of you for your service. It's a lot. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Clark, aka Dido. All right, Ted Ritzma.
Evening, Mayor, Council members. My name is Ted Ritzma. I live at 155 Sunset. You saw me last week, and I guess I got a little famous, because I got interviewed in the paper and made the front page on Sunday. I would like to thank you for, well, I would like to thank you, the council, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and Visit Longmont for doing all of the legwork to potentially allow short-term rental homeowners the right to do business in our city. I'm here tonight not to reiterate what I said last week, but to plead on a personal level with you. I have had time to review the City Council communication from December and fully agree with the amendments to the Land Development Code that were presented. I've been a small business owner for over 22 years. I own a print shop in Boulder. I do know how to pay taxes, apply for permits. Unfortunately, with my business, with online marketing, emails, Vista Print, I have not seen much income generated out of my print business. Thus, we need to have our house being rented for short-term rentals. We don't make any money off of it. Really, it just pays for the mortgage and the utilities. We still pay for, you know, our property taxes, no matter if it's rented or if it's not. I would definitely like the City Council member to consider having second homes. One myth is that income property, or investors will be buying up all of the available homes in Longmont and renting them out short-term. If I was an investor, I would buy the cheapest house possible, rent it out full-time for a steady income, and charge whatever I wanted in rent. Unfortunately, I'm not that person. If you do decide we cannot rent out our second home, then we have very limited choices to go on from there. Either I would have to have my wife live in the basement of our second home to make it a primary residence, while my daughter and I live in our other home a couple blocks away, or we would try and sell it. But the last time this house was on the market, it took over three years to close. Due to the antique woodwork, the eclectic style of the house, and a mortgage of over $2,300 bucks a month, you know, we'd have to take out a second or third out of our original house just to pay for the mortgage if we don't get any income off of that until it's sold. So, either way, thank you very much. Thanks for doing all the good work, and you guys are great.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ritzma. Ann Hunter.
Hi. My name is Ann Hunter, 430 Emory Street. Mayor Bagley and council, thank you for listening to what I have to say. I really appreciate all the work that you're doing on the code, and it seems to basically be going in the right direction. I'm going to say the three things that I think are actually the most important, and then talk more about a fourth one, which is important, but these three are really key. So the first would be to keep the floodplain in mind, and the wildlife corridor, the river, and everything that you're doing, because when the next flood comes, not if, that's going to test what you're doing today. So, that's really the most important thing. Also, agricultural land keeps getting forgotten about, so protect agricultural land and also potential agricultural land as you, as Longmont expands, and also, if land opens up, because it's not being developed in the way that it's zoned now, just keep thinking that, because we're losing it, especially in and adjacent to the floodplain, because that's really the best use of the floodplain, or anything close to it. The third thing is create affordable housing that's interwoven with all the neighborhoods in Longmont as much as possible, because as Longmont grows, it could fracture into rich and poor neighborhoods, corresponding to higher and lower levels of safety and services, and we've all been in cities like that, and it would be sad to see Longmont turn into that. So the fourth thing, I live in the Historic East Side neighborhood, and it's really important to keep protecting those historic structures, both in the historic districts and outside them, and to create the transition zones between the historic, between the different neighborhoods, so that we don't overshadow the historic structures with new, bigger things. My house was built in 1895, and it's on the historic survey map, and I got it declared as an official landmark. I really appreciate the work that went into the survey, all the work that Hana has done, the Historic East Side Neighborhood Association for years now. There is one thing that I disagree with some people on, but it's actually something that it looks like you're doing, and I, so I just want to make it clear, I actually support this. I don't think that the RLE district should be continued as a separate category. I think the single-family overall district is a better way to go, but it needs to be defined in a way that requires any accessory structures, including dwellings, to be safe, and provide everything they need, including adequate parking, and keep the historic flavor of what's around them. If you try to freeze the situation completely...
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
You're doing great, you're awesome, but I got to cut you off.
Oh, thanks.
If I don't cut you off, you're doing great, but then somebody else says something.
No, I understand.
All right, thank you so much, though.
Hello, Mayor Bagley and City Council. Nice to see you. I'm Sharice Montgomery, 1920 Andrew Alden Street, Longmont. I currently serve as the chair to the City of Longmont's Parks and Rec Advisory Board. However, I come to you tonight as a user of Union Reservoir. I'm a scout parent, and I've camped at Union many a times. While there are perks to camping so close to home, especially little boys that forget lots of things, but there is the St. Vrain State Park located just to the east of Union. To the best of my knowledge, the proposed reprogramming of the camping area would not affect the Scout Camping Ring. That would still stay at Union and still be able to be utilized by both Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. For all those nights I've spent out at Union, I never knew that the Rangers were not there 24 hours a night, or a day. There has been an increase in the amount of delinquent behaviors that have occurred out there, and I also know how hard it's been to find qualified Rangers to fill the positions out at Union. Paddle boarding has also become a really popular activity out at Union. I can remember back to the summer of 2014, we were able to just come to the park, go to the paddleboard shop, rent the paddleboard, and we were out on the water in no time. Now, reservations need to be made, and most of the time, they're full, even during the week. I recently organized an event that utilized the only shelter out on site, and also included renting paddleboards. Well, the locations of those two are really far apart, and so there was a lot of going back and forth. Not to mention all the other groups that happened to be out at the reservoir that day, and they were looking for shelter from the sun. So, reprogramming the existing campsites and the possibilities open up for a wide range of activities, better access to the water, and more permanent facilities, otherwise known as bathrooms. I wouldn't think of it as losing camping within the City of Longmont. I would think of it as expanding vast possibilities of the city's hidden treasure. Thank you for your consideration on the reprogramming of Camping at Union Reservoir.
Thank you. Chairperson Montgomery, Joseph Brenner. Okay, but you're always welcome to come back in the future.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Strider Bensden, 951 17th Avenue. I perhaps have spoke more often than I should about the destruction of our country from the top, under the slogan "Make America White Again," but it never was white. It was just only you had to be a property-owning white male to be able to run the country. So there is a lot going on. I appreciate Longmont City Council and the people who spoke tonight in dealing with the crossover areas between the internal spiritual content of people and the external modalities, and I think that is really crucial and really good for us to be doing. Let me quote Ashley Montague from 1950, who said, "Unless mankind can overcome his enslaved addiction to the religion of economics, we are certainly condemned to self-destruction." And I would like to, I think I lost my place. Well, let me just, well, I've got a few seconds left. Where did it go? Oh, okay. From Martin Luther King, "Every man lives in two realms, the internal and the external. The internal is that realm of spiritual ends expressed in art, literature, history, morals, and religion. The external is that complex of devices, techniques, mechanisms, and instrumentalities by means of which we live. Our problem today is that we have allowed the internal to become lost in the external. We have allowed the means by which we live to outdistance the ends for which we live." We really need to take that kind of message to reconstitute the entire world order, because the people who are making the decisions do not care or pay any attention to that crossover, that comprehensive entity, and we, like Ashley Montague said, unless we can deal with that, we are facing self-destruction. with that, we are facing, uh, self-destruction. Thank you, guys, you're doing a good job on, uh, dealing with the crossover realm, and let's keep on the path. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bensden. That will conclude our first call, public invited to be heard. Um, we're doing good on time, so let's go right into the study session. Actually, are there any special portions and presentations? No, right? Then why don't we go on into our first study session item, the Land Development Code Update, Short Term Rentals, and Science Standards.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, yeah, sure, go ahead.
Would you like me to wait for, uh, Councilmember Rodriguez to return?
Yeah, let's wait.
Okay.
Actually, let's take a two-minute break.
Okay.
Joan, can you hear the sound of my voice? Oh, there she is. Let's go ahead and start. All right, let's go ahead and keep going.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, Brian Schumacher with Planning Development Services. So, as you may recall, in November, uh, staff brought forward a ordinance for council's review and consideration. Um, it was based upon, um, recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission at that time, and based upon, uh, feedback from council at the November twenty-eighth meeting, uh, council asked us to come back at a study session to discuss, uh, some different topics regarding potential changes to the short-term rental ordinance. Obviously, there's a number of existing short-term rentals in our community that we're currently not regulating, um, but, uh, I know there was interest on part of both City Council as well as Visit Longmont for staff to take a look at this particular topic and come back with some ideas or options for council to consider. Uh, there was four specific policy questions that were included in your council communication. Um, and so I was, I was just gonna jump right to those unless you want to give, want me to give you a more detailed overview, but I thought it would be good, just to, in the interest of time, to get started with the, some of those policy questions, um, that council asked us to bring back for discussion. Uh, I did provide, and I sorry, apologize for the crudeness of my map, but, uh, I just thought it might be interested, uh, for council to see kind of the distribution by percent of listings in our community on this map that I provided at your desk. Uh, it just kinda shows how it's distributed throughout our community by location, um, and if you have specific questions about that, uh, certainly let me know. I know we've received some public feedback, uh, and input regarding the distinction between areas that are regulated by homeowners' association versus those that are not, and it's true that, you know, it's some subdivisions and areas that have covenants and homeowners' associations may not allow short-term rentals in their subdivisions. So, anyway, just, I just thought that might be useful as part of this discussion.
Do you wanna attack each one of these one by one?
I think that would be helpful, yes.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. Actually, it's just a real short question about this map. Where did you get the data for it?
So, this afternoon before the council meeting, I went on to, uh, VRBO, our HomeAway Airbnb and FlipKey websites, and I zoomed into each of those areas, and looked at all the listings and totaled them up, so...
Okay, thanks.
Mayor Protem Christensen?
When I look at, um, I've been looking at Airbnb and Verbo and FlipKey listings for the last six months since this came up, and every time I look at Airbnb, they're consist, and type in Longmont, there are consistently about three hundred listings, not fifty to a hundred. So, I'm not sure that we actually are calculating them correctly, but, um, when I look at them on the map that, say Airbnb has, they are clustered mostly in, uh, uh, Historic Westside, Historic Eastside, and Prospect. So, I know that they are spread around a little bit, but, um, I, I value what, um, somebody said about them being, we're kind of sitting ducks because we're not HOAs, and so, anyway.
Um, I don't see anybody else on the list. I guess, uh, just to share my thoughts, um, I guess I don't, I don't mind the short-term rentals, only for the following reason. Let's just assume we have an investment property, so, um, or actually not even investment property. So, we've got, um, homeowners who live there, right? And then you've got traditional rental units that typically neighbors don't like anyway, and those typically are on a month-to-month lease, which I think every city in the United States allows, you know, a rental on a month-to-month basis, even when the lease, if you sign a lease for six months or a year, once the lease expires, you're on a month-to-month, they can leave and come and go at any time. Um, so now we're talking about shorter, shorter-term rentals, and let's just assume we have an investment property. I decide to move, and I don't wanna sell it and invest it out. The options are either the Bagley family stays there with our four kids and our four cars, and, uh, we make a lot of noise every day, right? Um, and you can ask my neighbors that that happens. Or you have a short-term rental where, you know, they will come in less than one hundred percent of the time, and when they all come in, they bring a car and people, and so it's, I, I don't, I mean, if I were living there and we stacked all these people on top of us, then I would see how you would have more traffic. But I guess I don't follow the logic on how short-term rentals would actually increase traffic, because you're removing the primary resident and their cars and their kids. So, I guess that's the, I guess that's the crux, and I, I, uh, you know, when I've done this, I've come in, and, uh, the good thing is that if they're terrible, they're gone in a couple of days. Um, Councilmember Martin?
Yes, Mayor Bagley, I think the, uh, the, the thought on increased traffic is if I am living in my home, I'm an empty nester, it's a five-bedroom home, of which I am only using one now, and I have three or four concurrent short-term renters, uh, that's a lot of extra cars. Uh, so, I, I, I believe that that is the fear, and that could be, um, that could be certainly mitigated by, uh, restricting it to one group of renters at a time, uh, as opposed to allowing different bedrooms of the house to be rented concurrently by different parties.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Um, I find that the majority of the recommendations are good common sense recommendations that most of the council agrees on, and there only seem to be a couple points of contention, one being possibly the density of, of, or spacing, uh, would be the concept. The other one would be obviously the income property, and that's the one I wanna talk to specifically from my point of view. I think, uh, as we heard a little bit earlier from Mr. Ritzma, as well as, uh, somebody who I've talked to also, sometimes there are financial constraints that do lead to this kind of usage. Uh, and in, in those circumstances, I am completely okay with the allowance of an investment property for usage as a short-term rental, but if somebody has five or six investment properties, they are not having those same financial constraints. And so, I would, I would be in favor of what I would call a compromise of allowing one investment property, uh, to be an allowable usage as an STR. Anything above that, to me, is you're starting to remove properties from our housing stock, from our long-term rental housing stock, which affects our long-term affordability and rental rates. And so that's why I'm not in favor of STRs outside of one investment property, and ideally, I would hope, and this is one thing that I would push for, is that any investment property requires that resident to be a resident of Longmont as well, their primary, their primary residence also being located in Longmont. And so those are my, um, preferences when it comes to investment properties and STRs. Thank you.
And, just a quick comment, you can come to my law firm, and we could for, very easily get around that by just setting up LLCs and whatnot.
No, I understand, and I also know how to research LLCs, too.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying that, yeah. All right, Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I would agree with, uh, Councilmember Aaron on the investment property. I think we could allow it, but just one, uh, because there are those circumstances, uh, like Mr. Ritzma, that, and that happens, um, more than just for him. Uh, and as far as density, um, I just don't have, I, unless we, we, we would be giving out permits for these, right?
Speaking their mic?
We would be giving out permits, so if, if it became an issue with the neighbors, we could just limit the permits. Uh, we don't have that many, they're spread out pretty well, and I just don't see it as an issue at this time, but if it becomes an issue, we could certainly address it at that time.
Uh, Mayor Protem, uh, have you spoken yet? Mayor, Mayor Protem Christensen?
Okay, so, we're kind of interrupting your whole thing here.
No, that's fine.
Okay. The first problem I have is that this is currently in the temporary uses category, and yet the definition here of temporary event is temporary commercial or festivity, festival activity or promotion at a specific location which takes place typically no more than once a year, including but not limited to carnivals, circuses, and festivals. And that puts them in the same position as food trucks, seasonal and holiday sales, and, um, it needs to be with the bed and breakfast, uh, category, because that's essentially what it is. Um, so I would like that recategorized if we move forward with this. Secondly, we have a housing crisis, a really huge housing crisis that we've been talking about for the last four years, and even if this only takes up one percent of our housing, we only have four percent of affordable housing. So, our responsibility is to the people who actually live here first, not to tourists. We do want tourists, they're very valuable, but they also, they can stay in hotels, they can stay in bed and breakfast. I have no objection at all, I don't think anyone does, to some, as the, um, the proverbial old lady who has one room or two rooms to let out in their home, um, uh, it would be preferable for her to leave, let those out on a long-term basis, but she'd still be able to have an STR if the total, if, uh, she, she did this, um, you know, intermittently, or, I mean, she'd have the possibility of doing either of these. What I don't want, and we do, despite what Mr. Jeffries, who, I'm sorry, I know you think I have compassionate eyes, and I do, but my compassion is for the city at large, and I, I, I want everybody to have one roof over their head before other people have eight or ten. I know of real estate, um, agents who are buying up, have eight properties, and, um, they're renting them out of short-term rentals in, on the west side. This i- is affecting my neighborhood, because we don't know who these people are, they come in, they come out, they don't have anything to do with the schools, they don't pay property taxes, they pay some taxes, maybe, but we don't have control over our city unless we put in some protections, and unless we have some kind of, uh, some kind of licensing, as Councilman Rodriguez said, we, most of the, I agree with, uh, all of the things, I believe, that, um, Visit Longmont, um, suggested. I think those are reasonable, and they're not overly, um, harsh, and, and their recommendation originally was, uh, no, only primary residences and in, and no, uh, second homes or investment properties. Um, that's what I would prefer, but I do understand what Mr., um, Ritzma is talking about. He inherited a home, it's a very expensive home, it'll be very difficult to find somebody to, to, uh, do that, and as somebody involved in printing, I understand how the printing industry has gone south. Um, so I, I don't want to make it difficult for people, and I, I suggest that perhaps, um, what Councilman Rodriguez has suggested, which is allow one second home, not an investment property, you can call that a second home, but they have to live here, because otherwise we have the same situation. All the places that have banned these and had problems with them, it's because they just sort of let all this stuff take off, and they didn't, um, put in stuff, and now they have to fight Airbnb who's suing them and suing them. This is not, you know, it started off as a, uh, two guys looking up, uh, making a couch surfing platform. Now it has turned into a billion-dollar business, and they have a lot of money. So if we don't pu- put some thoughtful regulations in in the first place, thoughtful protections, then we will have a lot of trouble.
So, uh, council rules and procedures say that we all go once until everyone's had a chance, and then maximizes this at two, and the two comments per issue, but, so I'm gonna end, after this comment, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, let's But, so I'm going to end, after this comment, I'm going to, I'm going to say, let's go ahead and somebody please make a motion. Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I just wanted to summarize the use cases that we've talked about. And because I think we're very close to a consensus. So it is no investment properties except that if you have a single second home and you live in Longmont, then that's allowed. Otherwise, it's room rentals while you are present. That was on one of the recommendations that we didn't really highlight very much. But you should be present. And then there's, there's one additional case that I wonder if we should, I don't care particularly whether we allow this case or don't allow this case, but I think we're going to enumerate it because somebody's going to come up with it. And that is, if I'm going to go on a three-week vacation to Europe once a year, can I rent out my house when I'm not there? Or is that crossing some kind of a line? So, you know, I certainly think that, that the neighborhood would not appreciate it if I had a string of two-day rentals for the three weeks that I was gone. And it was just, you know, people turning out over and over again. But I think if you, if you allowed, if you allowed one short-term rental for an absentee landlord, that that might be reasonable. People could use it to subsidize their vacations.
You have not spoken yet, Councilmember Peck on this issue.
No, I haven't. Thank you. I wouldn't mind having a second home as a, an investment property for STRs as long as we didn't let corporations or LLCs rent it. It has to be the individual and their address needs to be listed with the city. The other, the other thing that some residents have asked me about is that they have roommates, especially older people to share their mortgages or whatever it is to make ends meet. Are we going to penalize someone who has a roommate, but they're not on a lease?
No.
Okay, thank you. And then Councilwoman Martin brought up a point that there are people, and actually, we were considering doing this, my husband and I, of trading houses with someone in another country or another state, trading houses on a six-month or a year basis. Have we looked at that? How, how would that work? It would be, could be short-term, it could be long-term. Would that fall under this?
You know, I don't think so, Councilmember Peck, because I'm assuming there wouldn't be money exchanged.
Yes. Oh, maybe not.
Yeah.
Because we would just trade. You just trade houses.
So I suspect that we would not, there would not be any money exchanged or taxes collected on that exchange.
Okay, so with that, I agree to everything that has been proposed by Visit Longmont in planning and zoning in our packet with the caveat that second homes not be rented to corporations or LLCs. Or rented by.
Okay, I guess, I'm just going, I plan on just taking it one at a time. There will be multiple, but I move that we should allow short-term rentals in primary residences so long as the owner of the primary residence is present. No further debate? Let's vote. That passes unanimously. I move that we allow short-term rentals in investment properties, but limit that, limit that to one investment property, short-term rental, so long as the property owner lives in Longmont. We can.
Can I clarify something?
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I believe that by requiring a primary residence in the city of Longmont, you would thereby negate the ability for an LLC or corporation. Because they're, they'd be listed in the permit, I believe, as where the primary resident owner would be. And so I think that in concept, well, it, it does list in county records if a property is owner-occupied or not. And so if it's, if it's registered as an owner-occupied residence within the city, regardless of how it's, like, it could be in a family trust, for instance. That's still an owner-occupied property. That's my point.
And I'm not, I'm not, under, under Roberts' rules, I'm allowed to make motions and vote against them. I'm not allowed to speak against them. I'm just trying to move us along. I, I was trying to make a motion that was, so if there's no second on that, if somebody else has a motion regarding investment properties, we will, we will hear it. If not, then, can I clear, can I get the clean? Can I, you want to second it?
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that the motion on the table says we will allow for a second, or we will allow for short-term rental investment properties to be permitted in Longmont so long as the owner is a Longmont resident. And we will limit that to one. So let's go ahead. Can I clear the screen? The voting ended, so I can see who's in queue. Please. All right, cool. Let's go ahead and vote. The motion passes with Councilmembers Rodriguez, Finley, Peck, and Martin for, and Councilmembers, Mayor Bagley and Mayor Protem Christensen against. So it passes. All right.
All right, next item is regarding the question of short-term rental of entire dwellings versus rental of individual rooms in an owner-occupied property. I know you may have seen some public comment you received in the past couple of days suggesting that short-term rentals be limited to individual rooms versus entire dwellings.
Point, point of order?
Yes.
I think we just voted on this. Did we not? No? No, what I'm saying is that the motion, we voted on this, meaning we just took care of it. I mean, Councilmember, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. If you allow a second home investment property that is not currently occupied, that's allowing an entire property to be occupied. So that automatically, I guess, would in, in concept, take away the, the argument between single rent, single rooms.
And if it's a primary residence, then the motion before was that the owner had to be there, so.
Correct.
They could rent out individual rooms.
Sorry to call you out on point.
No, that's all right.
It's my first one ever, man. It was established. I'm sorry.
That's good. Let's move on.
Councilmember Peck.
However, if our code says that if you have five bedrooms, you can have a maximum of 12 people, these could be 12 unrelated people. So those would be, even if it's a whole house, you're renting out five bedrooms. Am I making sense? In other words, it's not to one entity, like a family of four.
Right.
But it could be 12 different individuals.
Yeah, I mean, if you're a sole occupant of a house, the owner of the house and living there by yourself in a five-bedroom house, you could have the ability to rent out four other, your remaining four bedrooms to individuals.
And on that point, I want to bring up what, I want to bring up what Senator Jones said at our legislative dinner about his bill of creating, I forgot what he called it, but basically marijuana smokehouses. A bill allowing that, because what's happening now, do you remember this conversation? And this is where this makes me nervous, is that people who are vacationing here buy marijuana, but they have no place to smoke it. Because it's not allowed on the street, it's not allowed in public places. And they have to smoke it before they get on the airplane, smoke it, use it, something. So what they're doing is renting houses. I just want to put that out there because that was brought up by Senator Jones. And I would prefer that they rent the entire house rather than individual bedrooms. And I don't know what difference that would make, actually.
All right, there's, there's currently no motion on the table. Though I'm just pointing out, there's currently no motion or topic on the table. And so we've got a queue of people coming in. I just want to keep the meeting moving along. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I also think it would be fine if they rented the whole house. I know during Christmas time, my, my son and his wife and his in-laws and their two children always rent an entire home because my home is filled with my other son and his wife and their two kids. And, and so I am perfectly fine with someone renting the entire home without the owner being there. So I would make that motion.
So you would move to?
Allow people to rent an entire home.
If it's a primary residence? So if you, if you took, so. No, no, you would be, it's the scenario, the motion is, we will allow short-term resi, so you're saying, so I guess the previous motion was, we would, the previous motion was short-term rentals and you voted for it, so I guess theoretically it's a modification of the previous motion, so, yeah. So is there a second? The, there's a, the motion was made to allow primary resident, or primary dwelling units, primary residences to be allowed for short-term rentals, even if the owner is not present in the house at the time. So in other words, if you go to Hawaii for three weeks, you can rent out your property and during that time, you're gone. The previous motion was, anyway, Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley.
Just point.
I, I, I wonder if we should not put some limitations on that. That was kind of what I was getting at earlier, that that could happen where someone would leave town and we would want them to, and would want to rent out their house at, at that time. What I would like to say is the, the, the concern about that is that, that it would be difficult to maintain the property. So I would like to point, put out some limitations. I think that it could be, such a house could be rented to one party during one absence. Does that make sense? In other words, I'm gone for three weeks. I can have one short-term rental, but I'm not going to have a succession of short-term rentals. And I'm also not going to rent the house to two parties at once. Because then you get into this situation where one of the parties is renting it as a smokehouse and the other is a little old couple who is, is coming to their granddaughter's wedding. You know, you get in, and there's nobody there to, to arbitrate between that. And that's why I would like to put the restriction that you can only rent to one party at a time.
Mayor Protem Christensen.
I think we may be overthinking things because I don't know how we're going to check up on all these people anyway. However, I would like to sort of refer back to the best practices of what other cities have done. And also what was originally suggested by Visit Longmont, but not by the Planning and Zoning Department, which is that limit stays to 30 days. That's a short-term rental. Otherwise, they should be renting it to somebody. That would be my preference, renting it to people who actually live here. And the, the, in order for this to qualify as an owner property, the owner has to live in it for six months of the year. So the total number of days it could be rented out would be 182 days a year. That would solve quite a few problems. I mean, it's kind of, it's up to the property owner to figure out whether they're going to rent it to, simultaneously to a bunch of 20-year-olds who are trying to stay stoned for 30 days straight and a little old couple who just wants some peace and quiet and walk around the streets of Longmont. That's really the individual property owner's job.
Councilmember Rodriguez, I know you jumped out of queue, but you always have, you don't say enough and you always have good comments, so what do you want to say?
Well, thank you, Mayor Bagley. I was also going to point out something similar to what Mayor Protem Christensen was just pointing out as far as the original recommendations from Visit Longmont concerning the limit of 30 days, as well as the six-month recommendation as well. And I thought those would adequately address some of these concerns. And I was hoping that Councilmember Finley would be amenable to having that language added into her motion, if possible.
Do you want to go ahead and make a motion?
If Councilmember Finley is, is amenable, I would like to.
Well, it actually, it has been seconded.
Right. And adding, adding of an amendment. Yeah, I'd like to.
Go ahead and make the motion.
Okay.
Just go, go ahead and steal what she said and just add on what you want.
I, I would like to move exactly as Councilmember Finley moved earlier with the explicit recommendations from Visit Longmont concerning the 30-day limit stay within a six-month period of time.
Meaning that you can only stay for 30 days up to six months? Or you're?
No, that, that, yeah, that, that the homeowner has to live there for six, six months out of a year.
Gotcha, I'm with you. Okay, all right. All right, it's been, we have a motion, it's been seconded, let's vote. All right, the motion passes with myself dissenting. All right.
All right, next item is regarding an overall limit in terms of short-term rentals in the community. I know some communities put a cap in terms of how many total short-term rentals they'll allow. One of the examples is, Madison Springs has a 2% cap. And I think right now, just for example, I think in terms of the number of short-term rentals in some of the other larger communities, Denver's right around 1%, as is Boulder. I think Colorado Springs is about half of 1% in terms of their short-term rentals. Obviously, the mountain communities have a much higher percentage for short-term rentals, but.
There's nobody in queue, so I guess my question would be, okay, Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I was going to ask whether we could impose a cap at a later date and that would still be okay.
Yeah, we can certainly come back and update council on kind of progress in terms of number of permits that have been issued over time and see at that point if council would like to consider a, some type of cap at that time.
Okay.
Are you making a motion?
I have one comment first. I was still, still holding the floor.
No, I wasn't, I was, I was, I was not chastising, I was encouraging.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
We heard from a lot of people who said, I'm going to rent out my spare room because I can't afford to stay in my house otherwise. And so if we have a cap, then somebody might not be able to stay in their home because of our cap. And so I move that we not impose a cap at this time.
Second. Mayor Protem Christensen.
I oppose that. I would like to see a cap of 1%, which is what many other cities have done. And I would like to also have it not to exceed 1% in any one ward.
Okay. So no further discussion and debate? Let's vote. That passes 4 to 2 with Councilmembers Rodriguez, Finley, Bagley, and Martin for, and then Councilmembers Peck and Mayor Protem Christensen against.
All right, last item that I had was with respect to any type of separation between short-term rentals. Different communities have approached this differently. Some have put a distance, physical distance separation between short-term rentals. Some have put a limit on number of short-term rentals on a street segment or block segment or on a particular block. So we wanted to ask the council if you're so inclined, if you'd like to consider some type of geographic restriction or limitation for short-term rentals.
Nobody's in the queue. I would move that we have, Councilmember. Nobody's in the queue. I would move that we have... Councilmember Christiansen? I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Christiansen?
I would move that we have a 500-feet separation. I have friends in Highlands Park in Denver, and developers have come in. They've bought up whole blocks and just gutted them and put up stuff. And unless we put in some protections, we are very vulnerable to that sort of thing. So I would move that we have a separation of 500 feet between STRs.
Councilmember... Okay, Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I oppose that for the same reason. If you have two people within 500 feet of each other who both need to rent out a room in order to stay in their homes, then one of them loses. And I don't like that idea. I think maybe if you want to limit the 500-foot separation to only whole-house rentals, because we said we would allow them one investment property, then I would be in favor of that. But single-room rentals where the owner is living in the house at the time, I don't think we should put a... I don't think we should put that separation limit on because it's going to hurt people who live here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I look at this kind of... And I don't agree with the 500-foot concept, but I do maybe agree with a density concept. Because let's just say there's two homeowners that live in completely different parts of the city, but both of their investment properties happen to be within 500 feet of each other, per se. Or even still, there's an investment property here, and then there's an owner-occupied that's doing some room rentals here. It's not like a commercial investment where it's slightly a little bit... slightly easier to maybe find an alternate location. I mean, these people... These are already owned homes, as you can imagine. And so maybe doing a density per block versus a 500-foot setback would be a little bit more logical if we're going to do some sort of density restriction. So that's why I'm not in favor of this current motion.
I guess what I was originally going to say, my suggestion was going to be, if we do one STR for each street or block segment, and then allow additional STRs to be considered through conditional use review, we can then limit them, spread them out. It addresses Councilmember Rodriguez's issue, it addresses Councilmember Martin's issue, and still allows people to do the STRs. And so that... So you do one per... I mean, how long is this a block?
Well, it depends. It varies for different parts of the community. I know Durango, which uses that street segment, is basically from intersection to intersection. But that can vary, depending upon the location.
So that would allow it to be a little bit more flexible. And also, if we had one or even two people that came in begging and none of their neighbors cared, it would allow us that flexibility. Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. To address Marsha's concern about someone needing to have... rent a room because they need the money on a... To me, that falls under the roommate type of scenario, that they would have somebody living there and perhaps on a lease, rather than turnkey, someone coming in every two or three days. But I can see both scenarios. I like Mayor Bagley's idea about the conditional use. The problem with having the density of one per block is exactly what we were talking about, is that Old Town has small blocks. And some of the newer developments have huge, long road segments. So limiting them to one wouldn't be equitable, I don't think, so.
Mayor Protem Christiansen?
I'll withdraw my motion because I do think that I prefer what Councilman Rodriguez said, having it be based on density. And we could also put in here that this applies to entire houses or ADUs. So it doesn't really apply to people who are just going to rent out one room or something like that.
So I've got a question before making a motion, or someone else can make the motion. My question is, what about height? The conversation seems to be going about single-family residential, right? We're all assuming that we're, for some reason, going downtown, and this is our destination. You know, what about the condos? You know, what about condominiums as they start to get built? What about townhomes? What about... I mean, not all blocks are equal. So I guess I would... So anyway, with that question, I guess I would move that we limit STRs to no more than one city block segment, with additional STRs being permitted upon a conditional use review. In... In single-family residential neighborhoods. Still second? Okay. No, I don't see anybody in the queue. Let's vote. I do too. I do too. We got to start somewhere, though. All right, the motion passes with our dearly beloved Councilmember Finley voting against.
Well, mayor and council, that's all I had on the short-term rentals, unless you had other specific questions. We can move on to signs. And that's going to be brief.
Move on.
All right, thanks. So...
Hold on one second. Harold, do you have a... And then, could you clear my voting?
Councilmember Martin, were you trying to key in?
Sorry, I couldn't read. Councilmember Martin?
Yeah. I just had one question, Brian. So these are going to be permitted, so we will have data. And to address Councilman Rodriguez's concern that we don't have empirical data, this will produce empirical data when we pass ordinances like this.
That's correct. There would be an administrative permit process unless there's a second unit proposed on a street segment that requires conditional use review, then that would have to go through the conditional use process. But, yeah, there would be a permit process. We are proposing, as Councilmember Christiansen mentioned earlier, she had some concerns about it being in the temporary use section. We're proposing to move it out of there and into the administrative permit section of our code. But it would still be subject to an annual permit, and just in the event that there's issues that come up. So we could review that, and it would be renewed on an annual basis.
Mayor Protem?
There would be tracking, sorry.
Mayor Protem?
I would like to see there be a yearly inspection, just for safety. And I think we can easily accomplish that. Also, I don't know if we've actually decided whether we're going to follow the Visit Longmont recommendations, or the planning and zoning. They're actually quite different in some ways. And I would follow the Visit Longmont ones.
Yes, I do believe the draft, aside from the policy questions that we discussed this evening, that the direction that we're headed is consistent with the Visit Longmont recommendations.
Thank you.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I had two questions I forgot to ask you. First of all, on the section that talks about fire suppression systems in STRs, is a fire extinguisher considered a fire suppression?
Typically, fire suppression would be an automatic suppression system, such as a sprinkler system. Obviously, fire extinguishers, carbon monoxide, smoke detectors, those would automatically be required for any type of lodging type of situation. I know back in June, council made a motion to allow for an exemption for homes that are being rented on a short-term basis, up to five bedrooms, from being required to provide fire suppression, fire sprinkler systems in their homes.
Okay, I remember that also. And the other thing is, on this map, do you have any idea what the percentage of rentals are now in Longmont? When we said, what percent of STRs are we going to allow within the city? Do we have any idea of what they are now?
So every time I look at the VRBO, Airbnb, and FlipKey maps, particularly the Airbnb, it seems like there's more on the maps. I know the... I think in the communication it mentioned the range of 50 to 100. I think there's more than that now. But in terms of a percentage basis of the over... total overall number of dwelling units that we have in our community, which is around 37,000, it's less than one-half of 1%.
Okay, thanks.
All right, let's go ahead. Sign Regulations Overview?
Mayor, I just wanted to say, based on the information I heard from the council, one of the things that I am going to ask staff to do is provide this as part of a monthly update, especially as we move into this in the first few months. And then over time, we may extend it out, just so you see what kind of numbers are coming in.
So unless council directs otherwise, we were planning to route this into the larger code update, in terms of the timing to bring this back with... for adoption, when we come back with the ordinance language, if that's okay with council.
Is that okay with council? That's okay with council.
All right, thank you.
All right, let's move on to sign regulations.
All right. So as I mentioned before, this can be as brief as you'd like. So...
Very.
So we had a discussion with Plan and Zoning Commission on the draft in January. And Plan and Zoning Commission provided some good feedback on some specific topics that are outlined in your communication. My intent is not to go through those specifically, but just to provide council with kind of an overall goal with respect to the update to the sign code. One of the primary reasons, or the primary reason, is to address a 2015 U.S. Supreme Court ruling regarding Reed versus the town of Gilbert in Arizona. It was a case that addressed content neutrality. So with respect to our sign code provisions, we're trying to address that and removing content-based sign regulations as part of this update to address that particular issue and that ruling by the Supreme Court. Another goal is to make the, obviously, the sign code more user-friendly. Over the years, it's been... As it's been amended, it becomes a little disjointed. And so we're consolidating used our sign tables and reorganizing the chapter to make it hopefully more user-friendly for both staff as well as applicants. And then another item is just to allow more flexibility in conjunction with, you know, quality design. Some of you on council may remember that in 2014, the downtown sign design standards were adopted, which I think, over the last few years, has gone a long way towards improving and enhancing the quality of signage in the downtown. And so as part of that, in conjunction with creative sign design and quality sign design, we think that it's important to allow more flexibility, both in terms of perhaps number of signs, as well as sign area, to get that design creativity and quality. And then finally, as part of the review process on sign permits, one of our goals is to make the process more timely and predictable for applicants. So as part of that, creating more flexibility in the sign code, that hopefully, we will eliminate some processes that we currently have that tend to add more time. So as part of that, we have a more expeditious timeframe for applicants in order to obtain their sign permits. So that's a real brief overview. If you're interested, I can go into more detail, but I don't know if you have specific questions.
I move that we direct staff to continue forward with the suggested sign Regulations Overview. All right. Do you want to talk about this? Councilmember Rodriguez, I'm sure you have some theoretical... some ethereal comments on sign regulation. Mayor Protem Christiansen?
I do. I want to talk about signs. Having designed and built and hung signs, they're really important for businesses. And I... When Georgia Boys was getting started, they had a terrible time getting started with people locating them because it was against the city for a sign to be on the property that was not the other thing. Even though they gave their permission, the city kept saying, "You have to get rid of that sign." Now, there's another place, a bakery down there, which is also going to have trouble getting people to locate it. So I do think that we should be a little flexible. When something is further down the block or in an alleyway, there should be a way to find it, because otherwise, it's very difficult for small businesses to actually get started. The same thing happened to people in Boulder, who were located... who small businesses locate in the alleys. They wouldn't let them have any signs that stuck out. They wouldn't let them have any signs on the main streets directing the mayor, and they went bankrupt. And the same thing is true down in Cherry Creek, where they won't let them have inappropriates... I mean, they won't let them have signs unless it is right there on their thing. So you can't find them. So I would like us not to go down that road and be inflexible that way. I'd also like us to be able to grant a waiver for cabinet signs for the first couple of years of a business, because a sign is very... It's expensive. And the first couple of years you're in a business, it's really hard to cough up $5,000 or $10,000 for a sign. If you can buy a cabinet sign and have it installed for $1,000, that's more realistic than expect... Everybody wants a good sign. That's part of what draws people to businesses. But beginning businesses can't really often afford that. And I would just like us to be able to grant waivers. We do offer people money to help them buy signs or upgrade signs, and that's a wonderful thing. But I would like us to consider taking it easy on a business for the first couple of years.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is this... Councilmember Rodriguez, do you have any comments pertaining to the motion? All right, let's go ahead and vote, and then we'll come back to you. All right? And that passes unanimously. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I do want to point out that at Planning and Zoning, this recently, when we spoke on... or when they spoke on the sign standards, one of the points of interest in conversation was specifically the concept of the alley businesses. And I do believe, as the city grows and matures and urbanizes a bit, which it will eventually, that we will see more and more alley businesses. And this will actually be something that we really do need to look at. So I would concur with Mayor Protem Christiansen on talking about alley signs and signs for businesses that are not necessarily located on main thoroughfares or have frontage. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's go on to the next... Do you have more under sign regulations? No, we're done, right? All right, then let's go ahead. Are we doing okay? Can we keep going? Or do you need a break, anybody? All right, let's keep going. Let's move on to the land development code update on the development standards. You ready?
Ready.
All right, let's go.
Good evening, Mayor Bagley, members of council. I'm Erin Fostick with Planning and Development Services Department, and I've now joined Brian down here for this piece of the code update. So tonight, what we want to go over is the development standard section. And we'll just go through a short presentation and then entertain any questions or comments that you have. I don't think we'll really go through this, but just to remind council that we are updating the development code. It was one of the primary items identified in the Envision Longmont Multimodal and Comprehensive Plan. It's an implementation strategy. And there's a number of code update goals that we've gone through several times, including creating opportunities for high-quality development, innovative development, making sure we're keeping up with best practices. Our last code, as you'll recall, the last major update was in 2001. So we want to make sure that we're incorporating all the trends. Also, wanting to make sure that we hit those major Envision Longmont goals, including goals around employment, goals around affordable housing, and goals around preserving... including goals around employment, goals around affordable housing, and goals around preserving neighborhoods. We have talked with council about several sections of the code, most recently about three minutes ago, the sign code. Before that, we talked about zoning districts. We've talked about use regulations. And so tonight what we're talking about is the development standards. This is Chapter 1505 of the, of the code. And as you can see, this, this section of the code really covers a number of topics. Luckily, we're not planning on going through all of these in detail tonight. But, and we've noted in the council communication that not all of these topics are actually part of this update. There's a number of reasons why some of them aren't. The code has not been static. We've updated a number of these sections over the years. We've noted that in your communication. Some of them just frankly don't really require updates. And then there's others that are outside of the scope of this update, either because they require a lot more in-depth policy conversation with council or there's other efforts going on at the city that will inform these updates, and it's just not timely to include them now. Probably the best example of this is the protection of rivers, streams, wetlands, riparian areas. You know, we're in the process of working on the open space master plan. We'll be doing the wildlife management plan. We have the Resilient St. Vrain project going. And so all of those things will really help inform the section of the code. We are having our consultant kind of take a look at if there's anything that needs to be done currently, but that's really outside the scope. So you'll notice in the public comments that we've included in your packet, we have gotten a number of comments. Those won't be lost. We are saving those, but you aren't going to see updates to that section as well as some of the others tonight. What we do want to talk about tonight are a few sections. The landscape and open space section, streets, vehicle access and circulation. And really, there's just a couple of things there that is being proposed to be changed. The bulk of the changes in conversation tonight will focus on design standards and compatibility standards than anything else council mentions. You will notice in the draft code that we included in your packet, some of the information is in red line form. That's typically where there's fewer changes to that section. Those are really included as red lines to the current code. Some of the sections, like the design standards, are essentially new. They're rewritten because they are so different, or they're compiled from so many different sections. And then some of them are brand-new, like the compatibility standards. So this is kind of just going to follow in your council comm. We did take this to Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting last month and got some really good direction from them. And so we just want to kind of confirm that with council, answer any questions that you have. The first section that we'll talk about is the common open space and buffers. There's really two main big changes that are being proposed. I should note that we did update this section back in 2011, and that really consolidated several sections. It reorganized things and then provided some updates. So that's the main reason why there's not a ton of updates in this section. The existing draft does still have standards and will still have standards related to pocket parks, gathering spaces, buffers, tree lawns, detention ponds, greenways. So it's very robust. But what we are recommending and what this draft has, and I think PZ concurred with this, is that we, rather than require a specific percentage of open space in addition to these other standards, that we replace these percentage requirements with updated standards. So we're thinking that this can help with things like reduced development costs, which may lead to increased housing affordability. It can also help with maintenance costs for HOAs without having to, you know, what we tend to see is sometimes these percentages are achieved through, you know, strips of land that maybe aren't very usable. And so that, that tends to be a burden or could be a burden for HOAs. I mean, it may also help with water conservation and finally help us with some of our goals around mixed-use development because we're able to have more usable open space rather than just a percentage. We're also proposing that our buffer standards be changed. And that's really in an effort to, again, help us with some of our mixed-use districts and urban streetscapes to help us create those more vibrant pedestrian-friendly environments. So I'll just also say, if there's something you have a question on, please feel free to stop me or if you, you know, want to talk more about Planning Commission's conversation. But absent seeing anyone raise their hand, I'll move on to the next section, which is really around streets, vehicle access, and circulation. Again, not a, not a large number of changes here. We did talk about a couple of policy questions with the Planning Commission. So what you'll see in this section is really a proposal to eliminate loop lanes, which has not been used, as well as some suggested changes to cul-de-sacs and alleys that we're, we are proposing to make even beyond what you see in the draft. We asked the commission if they would like to see us strictly prohibit the use of cul-de-sacs, and I think they didn't feel that that was appropriate. But they did suggest that maybe we reduce the length of cul-de-sacs. And that's really in an effort to promote connectivity. So the other thing they talked about was ensuring that pedestrian connectivity is provided through a cul-de-sac, and that's, that's something that we see commonly now. We also talked with them about alleys and should alleys be required for a certain type of development? Or do we want to use a more incentive-based approach? And I think the commission's direction was that we should explore additional incentives for alleys. And so you'll see in the current draft that there are, there is some new language around alleys. And I think the commission felt like that, that made a lot of sense, using that incentive-based approach. So we'll continue down that road. The next section that we'll talk about is the residential design section. And as I mentioned, this is not a red-line section, but this is a current section in the code. We've added and expanded to this section substantially. So the elements that are really part of this section, we have quite a number of items regarding garage placement and orientation. Some of these standards are in place in our current code, but we've, we've really updated this section. Obviously, this, these design standards deal with architectural design, neighborhood compatibility, as well as looking at variation within neighborhoods. We are paying particular attention to making sure that there is compatibility through building materials, architecture, roof design in and adjacent to older and historic neighborhoods. And this is something that you'll recall Envision Longmont talks a lot about in the livable centers, corridors, and neighborhoods guiding principle, that it is important to provide transitions and compatibility. And this is one way this section is aiming to do this. The other thing I'll mention with this section is we've included a placeholder for a design review board. That was also a concept and something that was mentioned in Envision Longmont and something frankly that we've had some interest from the public on. We did talk about that with the Planning Commission kind of in concept. It's a little bit outside of the scope of what we're working with our consultant on, but we have included a placeholder. Planning Commission frankly had some questions and concerns. I don't know that there was a consensus on the commission of what that design review board would look like, who would, who would, who would be on it and kind of what their purview would be. So there's probably still some work to do there, but we think that it's a concept that's worth, worth exploring at a later date. So we've included a placeholder for that. And so that would be something that would, would come back at a later date. The other piece of the residential design standards that is new is a new subsection dealing with attached residential. So in addition to the expanded standards we just talked about, we have a new subsection for attached residential products. And that really deals with things like building materials, building massing and articulation, architectural features, roof design, entry features. And so you'll see a number of different things in that section. We do currently have some guidance around building variation within multifamily development, but this is really taking a broader look at attached residential design. Moving on to mixed use and non-residential design, this again is a section. There are some elements of this section that exist in the code, but not in its current form. Really, we've taken sections from the central business district, from our current mixed-use zoning district, and those design standards, and we've kind of reorganized them into this section. Also, because we're proposing with this code update to go from one mixed-use district to five, this would have broader applicability within the code. Similar to the residential design section, this is going to look at things like site layout, building articulation, materials, and architecture. Again, some of these are addressed in our current code, but this is really kind of reformatting and looking at things a little bit differently. We're also looking at incentives for mixed-use development as well as proximity to transit. So you'll see that. Building placement and then reduced setbacks. Again, this kind of corresponds with the buffer conversation I mentioned a little bit ago, working to look how, at how we encourage more vibrant pedestrian-friendly environments. And then the last section, which is...
Can you go back? Can you, I'm sorry, can you go back one slide?
Yes, I can.
All right, sorry. Go ahead.
The last section that we'll talk about is the residential compatibility standards. And this is the new section that we've added that's been referred to kind of as transition standards. And so this slide, I asked Brian before the meeting, this is showing bad examples of compatibility, right? And so this is kind of, this slide is sort of, not necessarily that any of these uses are bad in and of themselves, but this kind of gives you an illustration of where we might want to have some compatibility standards. So that might exist when you have two separate uses adjacent to each other. It might exist when you have buildings of different scales, when you have uses that may need to be screened or buffered, when you have different, different building designs, different building masses. And so these are some examples of when residential compatibility might come into play. So again, this is a new section of the code that really addresses that interface between more intense and less intensive land uses. So this could be what, what we've heard a lot tonight is, you know, that interface between downtown and a residential neighborhood. Some of the neighborhoods have, have really expressed a lot of interest, even from before this code update, but through the Envision Longmont process, that this is something important. And I think you've heard that loud and clear, and so have we. There are several ways to address this. Our current code has some residential compatibility standards, but they're not called that. So we have residential protection standards now. So we're carrying forward some of that. So it's important as we look at this section to know that this isn't the only place these standards exist. In the use regulations that we've already reviewed with council, there may be distant separation requirements from specific uses. So some examples around that could include a separation between auto repair-type uses, funeral homes. Marijuana businesses is one that we recently added, bars and nightclubs, so those types of uses. So that would be a distant separation. They, they may also be looked at through performance standards. And so you'll see some of that in terms of hours of operation, indoor and outdoor activity. So some of that might be mentioned here. Some of it might be mentioned in zoning or use regulations. So just keep in mind that all of these kind of work in concert together. And then, of course, there's some, the screening and landscape buffering that we talked about just a second ago. The commission talked quite a bit about these standards, and I think generally agreed on the approach. They also advised us that they think these residential compatibility standards should apply to undeveloped properties. So even if there's not an existing residential use, if there's a more intensive zone that abuts a less intensive zone, these standards should apply. One place where we spent considerable amount of time, as you can imagine, is talking about what appropriate height transitions are. And so we provided a couple of examples, a couple images from another community on how they approach height transitions. And so this is one of those examples here. This was kind of our starting point for discussion, and we're interested in feedback from council. I think Planning Commission had discussions about this. They had some ideas of their own. And so we're really just looking for your feedback on what appropriate transition heights for buildings are in areas adjacent to less intense uses. We've laid out some options in the council comm. You know, I think what's included in the draft is that the first 75 feet of an area adjacent to a less intensive use would need to mirror that height. So you can imagine if you were abutting a, a single-family neighborhood that had a height of 35 feet, you wouldn't be able to exceed 35 feet for that first 75 feet. And then beyond that, you could go up to the height in the zoning district. That's what's contained in the draft as a starting point. Other options range from limiting the building height on the entire lot. So any lot that's adjacent to that less intensive zone, that may work well in some spots. Other areas, lots are much deeper. And so, you know, that could create issues. You could impose it for, you know, only shallower, only shallower lots or a percentage of the lot, kind of similar to what we recommended. You could also not have a transition height. That's not what we're recommending, but those are, that's kind of the gamut of options. So we're really interested in, in council's feedback on that. That's really the substance of what we wanted to present to you for the development standards. We're happy, of course, we'd like some direction on the height transition. We're happy to answer any questions you have, and then we'll just kind of tell you what's coming next after we have this discussion.
We like being told what's coming. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I, I like your example here. I do think we, we received an email from the LDDA director saying that they have a committee, and that committee would like to weigh in on transition zones. And I would like to hear what their thoughts are on this before we really make a decision. I'd like to know what they think. But I like your example here. I, I would be in favor of it. I do not like the design review board idea. I've seen that in communities go really wrong, and I would hate for us to go down that path. But I would like to hear what the DDA thinks about the height and the transition zones and, and that whole concept before we make any decisions.
Councilmember Finley, did I hear a motion in there?
I move that we don't make a decision on transition zones until we hear from the LDDA committee.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Rodriguez? Okay, let's go ahead and, do you have a comment on the motion, Councilmember Pack? All right, let's go ahead and vote, and then we'll pick right up. Do you have a comment on the motion, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I would like to actually have the LDDA and the Historic Eastside Neighborhood sit down and have, hear from them both and see if they can come to some, you know, come to agreement.
All right. All right, let's go ahead, let's go ahead and vote on the motion, and then we'll pick it up. And that passes unanimously. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Well, since we've kind of put off the conversation a bit on the transition buffer zones, I'm going to ask a couple of questions real quick as far, and they pertain to concerns that I've heard from the Hena group. And this is actually around the zoning change that's coming in. As we all know, the Hena group fought very hard for the RLE zoning. And they're concerned that they're going to lose protections when it switches to the SFR zoning. Is there any material differences between the RLE allowances and prohibitions versus the proposed SFR zoning? As just clarification.
So in terms of allowed uses, the current RLE zoning allows single-family detached as the predominant permitted use, but it also allows through a conditional use process, two-through-four-family dwellings, provided that the particular block where the development is proposed does not exceed a density limit, which is currently six units per acre. The RLE zoning also currently includes some use standards that talk about things such as compatible design, contextual setbacks, which we're hoping to address as part of our residential design standards, to still get at that, not only for the, what is the current RLE district, but for potentially other areas where you might have that interface between older neighborhoods and more intensive type of development. So we think that we can hopefully address some of those contextual standards on a broader base, basis as part of the residential design standards. And then finally, I know that the Historic Eastside Neighborhood has expressed an interest in potentially wanting to retain what is called the concept... in potentially wanting to retain what is called the conservation overlay district. It was put in place, and I'm going to date myself, but I was here with the, the last major update in 2001, but it's never been used, and I know there's been some concerns expressed about what the threshold is to make that happen. And so, we've had some conversations about perhaps putting that back in the draft, if it's, if there's been an interest and potentially neighborhoods wanting to utilize that conservation overlay. And what it is, it's kind of a, it's, it's not to the level of a historic district necessarily, but it affords some protections for existing areas if an overlay is applied in a particular neighborhood or area.
Okay. Thank you very much. As a follow-up, so, currently, RLE is, is six units per acre. Isn't the density going up to eight units per acre under the SFR? Is that incorrect?
So, Envision Longmont, the single-family neighborhood, is that correct? Single-family neighborhood land use designation has a density range of one to eight units per acre. So, the intent with the code update was for the zoning districts to align with the Envision Longmont recommendations in terms of what potential density could be achieved under those zoning districts. And so, in the current draft, we don't have a, for the, for example, the residential single-family zoning district, we don't have a specific density cap, but we do have a, for example, detached residential, we have a minimum lot size. So, we're trying to get at kind of density through minimum lot size requirements. And I know, we did receive a request to do a calculation with respect to kind of the existing density in the neighborhood, and Erin, if you want to mention that?
Yeah, not to get too geeky on numbers, but basically, the existing density, if you remove the school and park for the properties that are zoned RLE, the kind of net density, so block by block without right-of-way is about 8.7 units per acre, and that's an estimation. So, you know, there, there, it varies by block, and certainly, we track that now because it's required by the RLE. Some blocks are over that substantially, some blocks are still under that and could accept additional units. But the existing density is at about, it's right at about eight, if you include the school and park side a little bit higher, if you take that out.
Thank you. And then, the single-family zoning that's proposed, two-to-four-family units would still be a conditional use, correct? No?
No, what we're thinking is that the single-family detached, or just the single-family district, would just be restricted to detached residential.
Completely so there, then, that would be even more prescriptive than the RLE in that concept?
In terms of uses, yes.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have on this part.
Counselmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I like the look of this height transition as well, but just out of curiosity, is there some kind of distance from the back of this building if it abuts a residential area? Is there a, for example, 500 feet from the, from the residence behind it? Has that been addressed at all?
Counselmember Peck, I think what we would intend is that the transition would matter regardless of if it was front, back, or side. So, that portion of the building that abutted the less intense zoning district would be subject to whatever that transition standard was. So, in this image here, if it was the back of the building, that would need to match in terms of height. It wouldn't matter if it was front, back, or side. It would be that portion that's abutting the less intensive district.
Counselmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. In this illustration, again, it seems to me that the, that we should apply a little geometry here, not to sound too geeky, but depending on, on the height permits in the, in the mixed-use zone district, the transition zone, it seems to me, may need to be longer or shorter, because what we're really looking at is the, is the shadow cast by the tall building over the residential neighborhood. We talked about solar panels, and we talked about gardens. So, 75 feet would not necessarily be enough if you went, instead of two, three stories above, you went to six stories above. Then, you're going to be, you know, depending on the direction with respect to the sun, you're, you're going to still be overshadowing that poor little single-family home over there. So, that the set, the transition zone should be wider if what you're transitioning to is taller.
I guess, just, I haven't said anything on this topic. I guess my concern is that I, I completely understand, you know, why was your building blocking my garden and my solar panels? But, right now, Longmont has, I mean, the tension is, we can either sprawl, right? Or we can be more dense. We can have, you know, more community. I mean, on one hand, we're talking about, we can be more community-centered and have walkable neighborhoods, or we can start, as I'm getting a running nose on camera, or we can, we can spread out and, you know, maximize our land usage. Whereas, so, I don't, I, I don't think we should necessarily dictate the, the transition between houses based on, based on, you know, the shadow, only because sometimes, I mean, I'm, I'm surrounded on, I'm, my neighbors cast a shadow on my garden, you know, my, my neighbors to the left, everybody casts a shadow on my garden, and I have a fairly big yard. And so, I guess I wouldn't want to start prohibiting people from, I guess I wouldn't want to start adopting that policy. Counselmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Also, in the single-family SFR, is that what we're calling it? You're saying that that does not allow for any higher density, or would it? As I recall, when we had the conversation in planning and zoning, you also would not allow any neighborhood businesses in that district, is that correct?
Thank you. Mayor Bagley, Counselmember Finley, the current draft does not allow really any non-residential uses in the RSF district. There are a couple other residential districts, the multifamily and the mixed neighborhood, where we're contemplating how we allow more limited, limited secondary uses that may be non-residential, neighborhood-serving, commercial, retail office, consistent with the recommendations of Envision Longmont. We did have a policy question in the single-family district of whether or not some type of attached residential should be allowed. I don't know that there was consensus on that, but I think we heard from the Planning Commission that they felt it was important to have a detached zone where there was just strictly single-family detached. I think there was a mix on council when we talked with you all about that. So, kind of the direction that we're heading in our next draft that we would be bringing back would be that we would allow detached housing in that single-family district, not allow non-residential uses, except for, you know, home occupations, things of that nature that we currently allow. But also, there would be the ability to allow accessory dwelling units, so that, consistent with what we do now in terms of a single-family zone. So, you could still have an accessory unit on a single-family property if you wanted to have, you know, a mother-in-law apartment, an apartment for a family member, or a rental property, as long as you lived in one of those units. And so, that's kind of how we're approaching that.
Yeah, my concern was not so much the accessory dwelling or the multifamily, it was more like the little restaurant in Polly's neighborhood, you know? I, I would hate to see that not allowed, because I think that is what makes a neighborhood gathering place, and, and to not allow it, I think, is, I, I just would be against that. I like those neighborhood gathering places, and I think we need more of them. I don't think we need just massive block after block of single-family homes. I think people need a place to go and to gather, and, and maybe you make that a conditional use. If it, you know, if it meets all the criteria as far as traffic and all that, you could make it a conditional use in a single-family zone, but I think that's what makes a neighborhood. That's what we're missing out here in the West that they have in the East, are those neighborhood gathering places, and I don't think we should discourage it.
Mayor Protam Christiansen?
Yeah. I agree with Councilwoman Finley. That is what we're trying to do with, excuse me, walkability, walkable neighborhoods and things like that. Have a little bit of that, not a lot, because otherwise, it changes the nature of the neighborhood. But, yes, I do love my, my little neighborhood place. I, I wanted to point out to Mayor Bagley that when I had my, I was building my garage, my lot is 50 feet wide and 100 feet long, and I live on West Side Old Town. And the reason for things like fence heights and setbacks and all that is so that we do have alleys that don't completely freeze up all winter long. I mean, my alleyway is solid ice all winter, it takes forever for it to go. And when I was building my garage, I had to pay attention to all these different setbacks and assure that a certain angle of my, there was enough of a setback so that my neighbors were not impacted by my building. I wanted to build it two stories high, but I couldn't do that. So, we all are subject to, you know, we all have to live together, and we all have to try not to do things that affect our neighbors. If most of the places on Historic Eastside Neighborhood are really not two-story buildings, they're actually more like 25 feet high, they're more one-story than they are two-story. And so, if you have a three-story building, and then it has a parapet and a bunch of things on the top of it, say, then the, the one-story or one-and-a-half-story building in back of it is going to have, it's going to be cold all the time, all the time. And so, I, I think we really need to be very careful about what we're doing to these, these are, you know, these are transition zones, we're not talking about doing this all over town. We do need to have sections of town where we have buildings that are more than three stories high, we need to have a lot more of that. But, we need to be thoughtful about how we do that sort of stuff. And when you're talking about a transition zone, it has to be a transition. It can't go from three or four stories to one story without causing problems for all those people who've lived there for their whole lives.
Counselmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Yeah, I want to agree again with Counselmember Christiansen, that we, we do need to worry about shadowing, we already do worry about shadowing. And in terms of, of counsel, of Mayor Bagley's density concern, I'd like to point out that, that the higher, the higher that you're, that what you're transitioning to is, the denser that neighborhood is, and therefore, your overall density still increases, even if you do require a wider transition zone to get to a tall building. So...
Just jumping in very briefly, my only point was, I don't want to have some type of rule that says, "We shall not build any buildings that cast a shadow on the adjacent property."
Wasn't suggested.
No, no, I know, but I just, it's just, I mean, oh, I've got a garden, or, oh, I've got solar pan, I'm just, that was my only comment. Counselmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I just want to concur with Councilwoman Finley on having retail, some retailer-like business in RFS that actually mirrors what's the sustainability plan in Envision Longmont are saying about walkable neighborhoods. The other thing I want to just switch over to, the pocket parks that you mentioned, is there in your code, or I think there should be, in order to, again, mirror Envision and the sustainability plan, the use for perhaps, community gardens within those pocket parks to limit the green space that we have to keep watered and irrigated? And possibly, what, what some, what some developers have said, if, if they could limit the grassy areas that they have to do, they can build denser, denser developments and make more affordable housing, if we can cut back on some of the requirements in, in those pocket parks. I think we need them, but the way they're designed and the amount of trees that are demanded to put in there makes a big difference in how a developer can meet our goals for affordability.
Yeah, so, one of our goals with respect to the open space and landscaping section, as Erin noted, is to create usable space as opposed to maybe remnant parcels just to meet a percentage. Yes, we are addressing that as part of this update. And as part of that, another aspect in conjunction with the mixed-use districts is that perhaps we don't need so much space that's landscaped with live-growing material, you can look at gathering spaces with hardscape that meets the same function, that doesn't require a lot of water for growing vegetation on. So, we're looking at that from a conservation standpoint as well. One thing I would like to request from the council, just regarding the, the question about smaller-scale gathering spaces, whether that's retail or smaller restaurants and the residential single-family, just to see if there's general consensus from council on that, that topic, so we can get, oh, sorry, go ahead, Erin has a top question.
No, it's just a follow-up. I just want to make sure that, that we're being clear with you. The Envision Longmont plan for single-family neighborhoods has the primary use of single-family detached homes. Secondary uses would include accessory dwelling units, parks, greenways, recreation, community gardens, schools, places of worship, and other complementary uses. In the other two residential zones, the mixed neighborhood and the multifamily neighborhood is where we've really contemplated those other types of uses, the really non-residential uses. And so, we, Brian and I, I think, just want to make sure that we understand what you're saying, because what we think we hear is a, is a pretty big deviation from the conversations that we've had. And so, we, we want to make sure that there's consensus on that before we make those changes to the, to the use regulations.
Counselmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I think, as some folks in the room may know, in some of our newer subdivisions, anything that's been built basically since the 90s, in my opinion, there's not a whole lot of places that you could put in such a conditional meeting place or, or neighborhood space like that, or small-scale retail or restaurant. As you imagine, these are very precisely plotted subdivisions. So, I mean, we'd be very much affecting such a small number of neighborhoods with this concept, although I am supportive of it, I do agree with it. I'm just saying, it's not real useful in terms of how our city's generally built out. That's all I'm saying.
Counselmember Martin?
I'm not sure that I agree. You know, I would, I, I live in a, a very precisely plotted neighborhood, it already is pretty dense, it has small yards for the single-family dwellings, and it has rowhouses across the street from single-family dwellings. And I think it'd be really cool if somebody put a little pub in one of the rowhouses. And I don't see why we, you know, why we should prohibit that, because it makes the neighborhood more interesting. So, I'm not sure, I think that, I, I'm not sure that there should be any neighborhoods that, that would make it impossible to put a commercial gathering place in as a conditional use.
I would be extremely upset, just for the record, I would be extremely upset if someone put a pub or a commercial gathering place, I don't care what it is, next to my home. So, sign me up for the podium when we have a public invited, be heard when that happens. Counselmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. It would be a conditional use with a public hearing, so you could complain about that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I live in a planned neighborhood, and I think a corner lot would be an excellent place for such an establishment, right across from the park. So you could sit on the porch and look at the lake and the trees and, you know, have a, have a, an ice cream cone or lemonade. I think that'd be awesome.
All right. The, I don't think you heard a motion, in the majority, but I do, I move that we just accept the report and tell them to continue. Was that a yes, a second? All right. Well, let's vote.
It's not our last chance.
Oh, no, it's not our, no, no, we're getting, no, no, we've got years together, councilmember. Years.
Put off the transition zone, even though we still vote.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was thinking the same thing. And I don't know the vote, but it passes unanimously after an hour of discussion.
So just real quick, hopefully we don't have years for this. I just wanted to remind everyone about kind of our next steps, and then we'll leave.
Somebody, somebody hasn't voted yet, by the way. We're in the middle of a vote. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. So what do you need from us?
We'll be coming back to you with the rest of the code, which is procedures, subdivision standards, nonconformities, enforcements, provisions. And then we'll be seeking a recommendation from Planning Commission, who's the recommending body. And then we're anticipating bringing the full draft to council for action. So two readings with an ordinance, second quarter of this year.
Second quarter?
So a couple months rather than a couple years. Yes, second quarter.
The final will be in a couple months?
That's correct.
Okay.
We would anticipate bringing the remaining sections back to you in a format similar to this, and then, you know, a full draft potentially, and then we would have first reading as well as a second reading and public hearing. If you'd prefer us to do something different, please let us know that, but that's our anticipated plan.
On behalf of council, thank you. This is a big deal, big work, and you're doing great. Thank you. See you next time. Go away. All right, let's go ahead and take a two-minute break.
Lauren, I feel left out. Councilmember Finley's just keeping her hold with everybody tonight.
Yeah.
All right. If you have been duly elected to the Longmont City Council, I would ask that you approach the dais, resume your seat. The last person to sit buys dinner next week. Councilmember Finley and Councilmember Marcia, or Martin. Oh, Councilmember Martin's buying dinner next week. You never, you never, yeah. Don't, 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 don't jinx us. Yeah. Didn't want you kidnapped. All right, so it's 25 till 10. Let's try to finish up by 10 o'clock. Let's just set a goal. Not saying it's necessary, but it's good to have, yeah, it's good, good to have goals. So we've got two issues. Let's go ahead and go on with reprogramming camping at Union Reservoir. Mr. Bell? Could you turn on the microphone, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Learn something new every time I'm up here. Mayor, council members, David Bell, Natural Resources Manager for the City of Longmont. I also have with me Kathy Crone, who's a senior planner, and John Brim, who is our lead ranger at Union Reservoir. So first of all, I just want to let you know, I'm not here to discuss closing Union Reservoir.
[laughter]
This really is a follow-up to our conversation back September. We had budget, and we talked about increasing fees and reprogramming our camping to help address some of the demand and uses out at Union Reservoir. So council went ahead and recommended that we move forward with the fee increases, but they wanted a little more time to talk about camping, get some more information, have us come back for some additional information on camping on Union Reservoir. So we went ahead and worked to put that together for you, so we'll have some time to have a little bit of conversation. But I know it's late, and we have a goal to get out of here, so we'll try to keep it moving as well. So as we went back and looked at it, in 2017, we had just a little over 1,000 people that were camping at Union Reservoir in RVs. In 2015, we actually had what back, the city had gone back and changed camping from seven days a week to just a weekend. So these numbers really reflect just weekend camping, which is what is available right now. We had 534 tents, so we had a total of just, you know, the 1,581 total campers out there at Union Reservoir. 65% of those were nonresidents. Those campers are using 2.5 acres for camping out at Union Reservoir right now. So when we set this slide up, Kathy put together, and I looked at this slide and said, "That's really kind of a lovely little setting. Why do we want to get rid of camping? It looks pretty nice out there." So I'm like, "Can't we find some of the beer cans spread around?" And looking a little bit more messy out there. But as I looked at it, I thought it really was a good way to let council know that we are asking you to make a tough decision. There's always a balance. We have limited resources, and we're trying to figure out how we can best balance our uses out at Union Reservoir to get the maximum use for the most number of people. So what we're trying to balance this camping with on these 2.5 acres is what we're seeing out at Union Reservoir. And this is, again, you've seen this picture in the past. These are cars lined up from the gatehouse back to County Line Road with people waiting to get in and parking in neighborhoods. We had, last year, 2017, we had 236,000 people out there for day use with their day use passes, or in vehicles that had a day use pass. And we had 2,480 season pass holders that were out there. So this is our total. We know that number is low because our season pass holders come back multiple times during the season. So we're probably pushing a quarter million people coming out, using the park on a day use basis compared to what we're looking at at camping. Again, this is something that's not unique to us. City of Boulder, if you saw the article here recently, they're trying to figure out how they're going to manage all the people coming out and loving their parks to death. Garden of the Gods is doing the same thing. Busing people in is opposing to letting people drive in. Rocky Mountain National Park. So it's not unique to us, but what's unique is Union Reservoir. It really is because we have a place, this unique long front range, that has wakeless boating. Again, I'm sorry, these people are coming in and using 1.25 acres. So they're coming in to use the reservoir. That ability to have wakeless activities out there provides a lot of opportunities. So people can kayak, they can fish. We have sail, sailboating and sailboating club out there. We have paddle boarding, and we hear where the speakers tonight talk about the paddle boarding increase. I talked to John Brim. And on the weekends, we're seeing about 100 paddleboarders, and on the moonlight paddle boarding, they're seeing up to 400 paddleboarders out on Union Reservoir. Just out there to swim, watch the wildlife. We have a sculling club that's now has a lease out there that's leasing the area, again, because of that wakeless activity. It just provides an opportunity where you're not competing against jet skis and water, and water skiers. Or, really unique, we have a dog beach. You can just come out and spend time with your best friend. So once they all get in there, though, no matter what their true destination is, they're looking for a place to spread out. And again, we're asking them to find a space in that kind of one and a quarter acres. So as we looked at how we address this, one of the things we looked at was, can we adjust our fees so we stay competitive? This is a little bit of kind of looking back. Some of the council members have heard this, but I wanted to make sure the new members were aware of this, too. So we looked at fees and said, "Can we align our fees and try to dampen the nonresident use, but also maybe drive some use towards the weekdays as well?" So we looked at that, and again, council recommended we move forward with that. So again, we weren't really trying to generate more revenue, but again, trying to manage use at Union Reservoir. We also went ahead and did some work to try to make it more efficient to get in the park. So we've actually done some paving out there. We've added a second lane and a new gatehouse. This allows visitors with a season pass to come in in one lane, and people that are buying a day pass to come in another lane. So again, trying to be more efficient getting people in the park, which put us in a spot where Councilwoman Peck asked a question, "Once you get them all in there, where do they go?" This is kind of that idea of reprogramming that camping area. Again, we know we have 2.5 acres that's being utilized for camping right now, and we could utilize that for that additional day use activity. The last time I was here, we did talk about some of the safety concerns about having just one ranger out there, a temporary ranger in the evening. I just want to put this up again for the council members that are new, but in reality, I think the real, the real goal here is trying to find the best balance for the greatest number of people using Union Reservoir. So after we left our meeting here with Prab, we went back and gave an update to Prab. Prab did, in September, give us guidance. They thought reprogramming it was a good idea. It wasn't a formal vote. So we went back and went to our Prab meeting in December. We talked about bringing this back to council. They went ahead and made a formal vote on it, and unanimously supported going ahead and reprogramming this area to accommodate the day use users, knowing that we're looking forward to implementing a master plan that will allow us to have long-term camping in a more reasonable area. So again, this is a slide that was presented back in September. The yellow areas are the areas right now that are camping. The one up to the upper part of the screen is the RV camping. The long, narrow strip is the tank camping. The two green areas are the current day use. So those are the areas that we'd be looking at reprogramming and putting into day use and removing the camping. Again, the question that came out of that was from Mayor Protem Christensen that asked, "Well, what do these campers do then? Where do they really go?" So staff went out, and we looked around the area. St. Verane State Park is just to the east of this area. They do allow RV camping and tank camping. Boulder County Fairgrounds does allow RV camping. And as you move into Lyons, the Vern Johnson Park up in Lyons allows for tank camping and RV camping. Both, or all three of those have facilities, running water, showers, facilities, and dumping stations, which we don't have here at Union Reservoir. After that comment came up, we had a pretty clear message from the mayor. Remember, we have a master plan, and don't pave the whole place. So I have Kathy Crone with me here tonight, who's going to talk about how we do something that allows more people in without having it look like this. And Kathy's going to tell us how we're going to be able to get something that creates more green space, more picnicking areas, more areas that we can use until we get our master plan implemented. So I'd like to have Kathy come up and talk about that now.
That was Mayor Coombs, right?
Well...
Because that man was a power monger. I mean, you could hear.
Our current mayor, who was, yes, a council member at the time.
Okay, I guess it was me.
Mayor, City Council, again, my name's Kathy Crone. I'm a project manager with the Natural Resources Division, and I've kind of taken the reins on the planning and implementation process out at Union Reservoir. And I'll go on. Back to this slide, as David stated, the graphic here depicts the areas in yellow are the areas that we'd be looking at repurposing to day use. And we haven't really done any much formal design for this area, but what we envision happening is the grills being, the grills for the camping areas being removed or relocated, picnic tables relocated to shady areas, and that would open up those turf areas for the, for the, for the day use areas. We could also look at extending the gravel and adding some car stops to really designate parking. So overall, we're not looking at anything high cost. This would be a pretty low-cost, low-impact venture to really repurpose these. We also could look at shelters and things like that if we want to look into that. So moving on to the master plan, primarily tonight, I'm tasked with kind of giving you a brief overview of the master plan, so as you make this decision, you have an understanding of the future plans. So I'll try to go through it, but keep a focus on camping. This graphic is of the overall master plan, which was first adopted in 2007, and then was updated in 2012 to reflect land use changes and purchases since the initial adoption. And I also wanted to point out, there is a pretty lengthy document that goes along with these graphics, if you're interested in the history of it and the process and more that went behind it. And we also have the original author tonight. Paula is our expert, if you have questions. So that is online on our, on our website. If you just search Union Reservoir Master Plan, it's pretty easy to find. Just wanted to make sure you're aware that there is more information behind these graphics. But going back to the master plan here, this, this overview, some of the highlights here, it does show expansion of the reservoir, which you can see in the blue areas. Back in 2005, city council directed staff to design the master plan according to a 13-foot rise. Thank you. Thanks. So that would, that's that blue area. That would expand the reservoir from 12,768 acre feet to around 24,000 to 25,000 acre feet. This decision was based on a feasibility study that was done that explored a five-foot, a 13-foot, and 19-foot rise. So again, that's a little history behind that, that plan, part of the plan. It does show a loop trail, which is the dotted line. this overview, some of the highlights here, it does show expansion of the reservoir, which you can see in the blue areas. Back in 2005, City Council directed staff to design the master plan according to a 13-foot rise. Thank you, thanks. So that would, that's that blue area. That would expand the reservoir from 12,768 acre feet to around 24,000 to 25,000 acre feet. This decision was based on a feasibility study that was done that explored a 5-foot, a 13-foot, and 19-foot rise. So again, that's a little history behind that, that plan, part of the plan. It does show a loop trail, which is the dotted line around. So that loop trail's been envisioned out at Union for quite some time. It shows shifting of County Road 26. This is not something that's likely to happen in the near future, but the master plan really isn't contingent on that road moving. It shows the South Recreation Area, which is where the current day use happens, and an East Recreation Area. And I'll get into these in more detail in the next slides. But basically, the primary day use that you see happening now really moves to this east area. And then this overview shows a sensitive wildlife habitat area on the north side. And this highlights a 300-foot buffer between the trail and the future high water versus 150-foot wildlife buffer that's really designated in the current wildlife management plan. So then moving on to the next graphic in the master plan. This is the South Recreation Area, which is where the current visitor use occurs. And this area really converts to boat storage. It has launch areas, an event rental building with lower-level boat, which is kind of a lower-level boathouse. And it does have a trailhead and trail access outside of the fee area. So this area really isn't day use anymore, but people who have access and passes to their boats and to the rental areas. The next slide, and I apologize, I think this was left out of your packet, and this really shows the camping, which is what we're talking about. But this is the East Recreation Area. If you can picture, the current sailing club is around, right around here. County Road 26 comes and makes this corner. So we're really on the east side. This area becomes a primary recreational day use area, also with overnight camping. Basically, all of the existing program uses currently in the southwest or the existing area move to this area, which includes picnicking, fishing, has a swim beach, beach lockers, concessions, showers, restrooms, changing areas, boat launches and rentals, has a playground, has fishing piers, a gatehouse and ranger office as you come in. And then again, it still has a trailhead and access to the trail, which would be outside of the fee area. And then it has camping, so up in this area. And this plan shows 34 full hookup spots, RV spots, with restroom, shower, fish cleaning stations, and a waste stop. And then it has 32 tent spaces, also with restroom, showers, fish cleaning. And then it also moves, the scout circle moves to this area as well. So we preserve that use in this plan. And I think overall, you know, this plan really gets to the amenities that are really needed. It addresses ADA, all that kind of stuff. So given this as an overview of the master, it's important to point out, this is a master plan level. Design development still needs to occur to determine phasing, cost estimates, and budgeting, for budgeting purposes. And really, it needs to look at the ultimate, what we really want that ultimate water level to be. So that can be looked at during the design development as well. In 2012, when the plan was adopted, the estimate for the project in its entirety is up around 14 million. So we'll definitely need to do some prioritizing when we come back. And then I also wanted to go back to this area, the existing area, and looking at the master plan. If we look at reprogramming these camping areas, you can see this is where the RV camping occurs, and the tent camping is right in this area. So you can see that by repurposing these camping areas, we are consistent with the master plan in terms of we're not planning to have camping in those areas in the future. So lastly, beyond the master plan, I just kind of wanted to give you an update on currently funded projects and efforts that are happening at Union Reservoir. In 2017, you saw the photo of the entry road widening and the gatehouse improvements. 2018, we're hoping to replace the entry bridge, which is the main entry into the park. It's very substandard. And also in 2018, the Spring Gulch Number Two Greenway Trail, which connects to and comes through Union Reservoir, that's hoping to go out to bid soon. In 2019 and/or 2020, we'll see the County Road 26 improvements. That'll be asphalt and widened. And that also includes the south section of the Union Trail will be built with that project. So from the existing use area over to the sailing club, that portion of the trail is funded. In 2020, we have funding for the construction of the west section of the trail. So that's kind of from Jim Hamm down to our current use area. In 2021, we have the phase of the trail, the north and the east sections and trail. And then during all of that, we also will be working on design development for the master plan so that we're designing and building a trail that's compatible with our upcoming master plan improvements. Also, you know, it, I also wanted to note that these kind of highlight the construction portions, but there's design development along the way, leading up to all these efforts. And we'll have to be, continue to evaluate the unknowns in order to develop a plan for implementation of the master plan and come back to you for, to request appropriate funding as we know more. So in conclusion, that's our, that's our presentation. If you have any questions, we're here. And I think our question for you is, does council support staff moving forward with the reprogramming of the current campsites?
Councilmember Peck.
I move that council supports staff moving forward with the reprogramming of the current campsites.
No, yeah, yeah, let's vote. See, not so complicated. Passes unanimously. You have our full support.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to, and then let's move on to the last, the discussion of possible direction to staff. This is actually something I put on that I asked to add to the agenda last week after the mayors and commissioners meeting. Councilmember Peck, you're always welcome to join me at that meeting. So you have a standing invite. The, we received, the letter's in our packet, and the reason I wanted to put it on is because, so essentially, it's a, it's the Boulder County Commissioners and the mayors of Boulder County, and we get together to discuss transportation needs. And there's a letter that we're going to be preparing to send to CDOT, and the actual head of CDOT was there to present, and we wanted to give him this letter. And the mayor of Westminster basically said his council was not going to support the letter because he felt that, forgive me if I'm misstating here, you were there and listening. But he essentially said that his council felt that the project list was too focused on multimodal. We need to work on widening and improving our roads. And that, that's, that's okay, except that, that on the list, he also requested, the mayor also requested that they put on two projects for Westminster that were putting approximately $35.6 million, for example, for one project that was going to be platform stations for their, for their fast track modality. And so I kind of paused for a second and thought to myself, "They're not supporting the letter, but they're also asking for multimodal issues," which that was the reason why they were supposedly not approving the letter. And it was also a project that was FastTrax, which I'm not getting the impression that we're getting much support on. So we'd be double dip, or double paying to fund more of their projects out of CDOT money. So we'd be taxed once for FastTrax, taxed again for a transportation tax. Anyway, it just didn't strike me quite as sound. But I'm sure there are reasons for it, as I was discussing with Sean before the meeting tonight. So that was the reason why I decided to bring it back and get your input, rather than just making a decision on my own. Yeah, go ahead, all you guys.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Sean Lewis, Assistant City Manager. I think Mayor Bagley pretty correctly summarized that. The only thing that I would add is that I have had a chance to have a conversation with a transportation planner in Westminster, who has been part of this group for many years, Deborah Basket. She explained to me that after that meeting, she got some further clarification that the projects that Mayor Atchison of Westminster during the meeting described were not exactly what Westminster was asking for. It wasn't actually a FastTrax-related project. It was actually a platform for a station that will serve for BRT. And so I also got a call from Audrey DeBarros with Commuting Solutions. They're one of our transportation management organizations, saying that in her opinion, that that was actually part of the NAMS, because it was a completion of the 36 BRT project. And as you know, Longmont, along with all the other cities in the region, did pass, approved Fast, excuse me, the NAMS report, which did call for completing 36. So there was some discussion about those two items. The last thing that Deborah Basket mentioned was that in Westminster's case, all of the projects that the MCC had put in the letter were all in Boulder County or Broomfield. And Westminster's kind of, I guess, beef with that was that they felt like there should be a couple of projects in the, in the letter that we were really promoting to get more funding for our region that were actually in Westminster's. They wanted a couple of projects in Westminster. So that made a little bit more sense to me, at least after the meeting, hearing that and then looking at the project list and realizing, "Oh, we didn't actually put anything in our letter to CDOT for Westminster." And of course, they're one of the voting members of the MCC and actually the largest city in the coalition. But certainly, Mayor Bagley is exactly correct. Those were not projects that were in the NAMS, the original NAMS. Again, I was lobbied by one member that said, "Yes, they kind of were, or at least one of them was." But they are new additions, and anytime that we change a position of the city, Mayor Bagley is exactly right. We need to bring that back to council and make sure that you all agree with that. And staff will be glad to answer any questions.
Just one more point, though. The BRT in 2004, Bus Rapid Trans, all, all BRT is not created equal because BRT from Union Station to Boulder is part of the 2004 ballot-approved FastTrak measure, whereas BR, coming out of FastTrak dollars, whereas BRT along 119 between Boulder and Longmont is coming out of RTD dollars and not part of FastTrax. So the reason I said it's part of FastTrax, it's not a train. It's not a train platform. It is nevertheless a FastTrax platform. And my comment at the meeting was, I personally am willing to get behind this, but I expect Mayor Atchison, at some point, when we're ready to, when we're pushing for the rail, to step up and back us up. And I also told Boulder that BRT between Longmont and Boulder is not something we're asking for. It's something that we're supporting you for, and we also want your support. And I believe they understand that we expect that support. And so again, I thought it would be more meaty if we went back and said, "Yeah, we're going to go ahead and approve the list, but we stand together and say, 'When the time comes to ask for our porridge, everybody else.'" There was actually the analogy, I'm going to show the analogy. The CDOT director said that it's like a lifeboat with 10 people on it. And they, the good news is, they all made it to the lifeboat, and they found five crackers in a cubby. And I pointed out that it's not quite like that analogy. It's like having 11 people on the boat, and you're forgetting about the 11th, right? And you guys already had your 50 crackers, and now you find five more. We want those crackers. And so I was, I want the council's support. If we're going to sign the letter, I just want to make sure that they do so, knowing that we are supporting our neighbors and we expect them to support us back. So that was, and originally, my intent tonight was to say, "Let's approve the letter if we take off Westminster." But based on what Sean just said, if they've got no, if they've got no porridge in this particular box of porridge, they should get a little something, something. Is that what you're saying?
That's up to you guys to decide.
But that's, but that's your opinion, right? Phil?
It is.
That's what you think, right? Yeah. So do I have permission to sign the letter with the, with the noise that I make, saying we want support? Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. First of all, I applaud you at the, for your efforts in the Denver Metro Mayor's Caucus to have the corridor, the Northwest Corridor listed in the CDOT project list. Unfortunately, it is listed, but it's on page 29 of 29 pages.
But it's there.
It's somewhere in there.
It's progress.
You kind of have to dig. But, so I applaud you for that, and you did get, you did get, actually stopped the consensus at the first meeting because you got your five cities, but then it all fell apart, and they didn't support it after that. So, but I'm not going to support you. You do need, we do need the majority to, so we don't lose our standing with the Metro Mayor's Coalition. But I personally am not going to support it because our staff, the RTD director and myself have been working very hard to come up with a workable plan through an alliance of the municipalities on the corridor to bring the promised rail to Longmont. And I'm reading this, so I won't make a mistake. The last hurdle of this is financing, is a financing source to make up for the lost revenue we got from the recession, the sales tax revenue from the recession, and in part from online sales, which we're not getting for FastTrax. And if we truly believe in Dr. Cog's metro vision of a regional multimodal transportation plan, which this council adopted last year, or the multimodal vision that the voters agreed to in 2004, then I believe that all regional and state funding sources should work toward including rail, not just BRT and bike paths. And this letter should include a percentage of the transit dollars from this initiative going to the FastTrax unfunded corridors. So thanks for letting me say my spiel.
Great, thank you. So the, Mayor Protem Christensen?
Yes, I agree with Councilwoman.
I agree with Councilwoman Peck. I think this undermines our efforts to get rail here. Having been a bus driver, I can tell you, and I can bet that Councilwoman Finley, who takes the bus every day, can tell you, there's really no such thing as BRT unless they have a dedicated lane. It's just BT. Because if you are subject to all the same things that cars are, then there's always an accident. There's always something slowing things down. It's just bus. So calling it Bus Rapid Transit doesn't really make any sense. I want us to, I want them to, instead of continuing to talk about widening highways, which only undermines public transport, I want them to actually give us what we voted for. And there isn't a mention of that in this letter, so I, I can't support it.
So, so timeout. So there's two letters that we're talking about here, right? And I want to make sure we're not getting confused, okay? There's one organization called the Mayor's, or the Metro Mayor's Caucus, right? That is made up of 40 mayors of the metro area that operate based on consensus, right? And so at the annual retreat, the mayors came together and they attempted to, or they're trying to decide whether or not they are going to back, and they in fact are backing, the Denver Chamber of Commerce and the effort through the Denver Metro Chamber of Commerce to put a half cent or possibly a full cent sales tax on the ballot to raise $9 billion potentially for transportation funding that we're missing on the state. There's that issue, right? And then over here, there's what's called, and I didn't know this until I was elected mayor, by the way. Thanks, Dennis. But there's the Mayors, the Mayors and Commissioners Committee, the MCC, which essentially is an alliance of, and there's all, there's, which is an alliance of Boulder County in this corridor, the Northwest Corridor, that deals with coming together. It's kind of like a little caucus that we get together and team up and go to Washington DC to ask about federal funding for our transportation projects. And right now, the list that we're asking for that would benefit Longmont are things like 287 between now, here and Denver. You've got Highway 119, BRT between here and Boulder. We've got Highway 7 that would benefit our neighbors over in Broomfield, right? And where? In Boulder? In Boulder. We've got, there was one more that benefited us.
287.
287, 119. Anyway, I thought, so my point is, all of them, the letter itself is going to CDOT, which is, has nothing to do, I mean, they could if they wanted to, but they don't, those, that's not necessarily fast-tracks, if that makes sense. So if we, so right now, everybody's on board the letter, and they're really mad at Westminster for not supporting the letter, right? I think by supporting the letter, we make more progress, right, in getting what we want. I really do believe that. Because I've heard, I mean, I flat-out told Zan and Elise that I expect them to back us on fast-tracks. And I sat there in the room, for the first time ever, they looked at, they looked at the head of CDOT, and for the first time ever insisted that Longmont get its train, which is progress, talking about this letter. So what I'd suggest and ask is that we actually approve the letter, reminding them that that, I mean, I can look them in the face, no problem, look them in the eyes, and they have responded honorably. And so as we move forward into this next unknown, unknown land of working together to get Longmont its train, I think it would be beneficial to sign the letter. At least those, I mean, I share your concerns, Councilmember Peck and Mayor Protem Christensen. I do. But it's asking, we're going to be going to Washington DC and also as a team, asking for federal dollars. So I wasn't worried if Councilmember Peck is a, you know, is a passionate, you know, symbolic vote of, you know, somebody's got to remind people that Longmont needs its train. I don't worry about her vote. But if we're starting, and now we lost the Mayor Protem, now we're down to two, we got, we got to approve it. And so I just want to make sure that we, yeah, just making sure that other people vote for the letter. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I think as some folks are familiar with, one of my major things on the campaign trail was infrastructure. And that's, this is an infrastructure project, and I am not in good conscience going to vote against supporting it. I do believe that there are certain things that very much benefit specifically Longmont, or could specifically benefit Longmont. But I think that also improving infrastructure regionally will second-hand benefit Longmont in certain circumstances as well. And then also being a good neighbor with our fellow communities is also important to me. So, and again, this is a letter. I think showing support for a letter is not, I think, detrimental to our efforts to bring the train to Longmont. So I have that slight disagreement with you, Councilmember Peck, but I will be in support of the letter.
Councilmember Finley?
I'm also in support of the letter. I therefore move that we allow Mayor Bagley to sign it.
Seeing no further discussion, let's vote carefully. All right, that passes. All right. That passes with, wait a second, I got to read it. All right, there we go. That passes with Councilmembers Rodriguez, Finley, myself, and Martin for, and Councilmembers Peck, and Mayor Protem Christensen against. So thank you. I think that that is a perfect vote, if you were to ask me. Perfect. All right, with that, let's go on to Mayor and Council comments. Seeing none? Awesome. City Council remarks? I'm sorry, City Manager remarks?
Mayor, I'm going to ask Karen to come over and come down and go over some information regarding the meeting that you wanted to have concerning inclusionary zoning.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Karen Noye, Community Services. So last week, you gave us direction to pursue inclusionary housing, and the okay for us to work with consultants that we worked with before to generate some data that we can bring back on the 20th for a session to figure this all out. So the good news is our consultants are available to work with us. The bad news is they are not available on the 20th of February. Both of the consultants that we've worked with are out of town on another project. So we would love to suggest, if you would be all right with that, a different date. The preference for the consultants is that they will both be in town for the meeting if we did this on March 5. So that would be their preference. If that is not preferred by council, and you would like us to come back on February 27, we can make that happen. There would just be one of the consulting team that would be available that evening, not both of them. So we're looking for direction on which council meeting to schedule this, prefer the 5th, and could make the 27th of February work, if that is your desire.
Some of the, nobody's in the queue. All right, Mayor Protem Christensen?
I would, I would move that we move forward with it on the March 5, so that we can have both of them. Thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and vote. Keep up, Don, keep up.
Thank you very much.
All right, that passes unanimously. Anything else, Harold? All right. City Attorney?
No comments, Mayor.
Oh, beautiful, beautiful. All right, let's go home. We're adjourned.